Okay, here we go. I would like to call to order the October 19, 2001 meeting of the West Palm Beach Planning Board. Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Stephen Mans.
Present.
Peter Pivko.
Present.
Deborah Range. Let the record reflect it, Deborah Range is not present. Andres Perdello. Let the record reflect it, Andres Perdello is not present. John Hicksonbaugh.
Here.
Kathleen Ward.
Present.
Henry Smokler.
Here.
Carla Bryant.
Here.
Right, next order of business is approval of the September 21, 2021 minutes. Has everyone had the opportunity to review them? Are there any changes or corrections? And if not, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the report of the planning staff.
Chair, Angela Van Plannen is owner administrator. Just for FYI, there's overflow seating in the room there, just to your south. For those who can't find seats in here, the actual meeting is actually on in that room, so you can actually sit across the hallway there. To give you an update of cases that's been heard by the City Commission since your last annual meeting, and I forgot to change the first slide. City Commission meeting, October 4th, 2021, Commission approved the following case by four to zero vote, and you heard this at your August 17th, 2021 meeting by seven zero approval. This was the property rights element, if you remember, that the Florida legislator amended the Community Planning Act this year and required cities and counties to include a comprehensive plan in their plan and property rights element. And basically, staff did follow that and the Commission did approve it. At the City Commission meeting on October 18th, geez, 2021, Commission approved a three to zero vote, and again, you heard this at your August 17th, 2021 meeting by seven zero vote. And this was the Park Central Residential Plan Development. This is a 14-unit townhome development locating just off of Parker and Dock Street, and the Commission did approve that. And that's all the cases that have been approved since the last Commission meeting. Any questions?
Any questions of staff? Thank you. Next on our agenda are remarks by the chairperson, of which I have none. So next is the Declaration of Ex parte Communications, and let me begin by disclosing the following. I'm Planning Board Case Number 1857B. I have spoken or video conference with the applicant and its team. They're joining property owner Dennis Grady of the Chamber of Commerce. I have also received dozens of letters, I believe they were all in support of the application, all of which have been forwarded to the clerk for inclusion in the record. I'm Planning Board Case Number 1899. I had a telephone conference with Joseph First, a principal of the applicant. None of these communications will prevent me from deciding these cases solely based upon the evidence presented this evening. Does anyone else have anything to disclose? Let me start with you, John.
Yes, actually, I need to recuse myself from Planning Board Case Number 1899. I engaged in a presentation with the Chamber of Commerce in June on this particular case and presented a vote at that time as a member of the chamber, so I will recuse myself from voting at this time. There's no other ex parte discussions to disclose.
Thank you so much. And John Uhettnan?
On Case 1857B, I was contacted by the representative for an adjacent property owner to meet. I declined to meet, and like you, I received dozens of letters, all were in support. None of that will impact my deliberation this evening. My decision will be based on the testimony presented this evening.
Thank you so much. Peter?
I also was contacted regarding Planning Board Case 1899, similarly with Case Number 1857B. I had a conversation with both applicants, I had a conversation with former Mayor Jerry Moye, and my mother called me on that one, too.
That's all. All right, thank you. Kat, anything from you?
With regards to Case 1857B, I had a conversation with the representatives of the Frisbee Harvey Oyer. I had a conversation with the adjacent property owners, Forte, a conversation with a member of the Chamber of Commerce, as well as former Mayor Moye, and received various emails, which seemed to be all in support. And then with regards to 1899, I was emailed, but I wasn't able to discuss it with them. None of these communications would prevent me from deciding the cases solely based on the evidence presented at the meeting.
Thank you so much. Henry?
With respect to Case Number 1857B, I also had a conversation with principals and representatives for the applicant, as well as conversation with representatives of the adjacent property, the Forte. And with respect to Case Number 1899, I had a conversation with the representatives, principals of the developer in that case. And also received, again, numerous letters in support of, as it relates to 1899, numerous letters in support of that project. But none of these communications will prevent me from deciding the case solely based on the evidence presented at the meeting.
All right, thank you so much. Next on our agenda are continued cases, of which there are none, which then brings us to Planning Board Case Number 1624HH. Would anyone who plans to speak or offer testimony this evening, please stand up at this time and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you so much. You may be seated. You may be here, then, from Joni Brinkman.
Good evening. For the record, Joni Brinkman with Urban Design Studio, on behalf of the applicant, Banyan K Development. What we had before you denied is a major subdivision. This board had actually already seen this back in 2015, made some minor changes, and are coming back now for reapproval so we can record the plat. This is a subdivision of a replat tract L2. It's about 10.10 acres. We're proposing 31 fee simple, single-family lots, three open space tracts, and a roadway tract. We are in receipt of approval recommendation from staff with one condition, and we are agreeing with the condition of approval as stated in your staff report. Just to give you an idea where the project is located, this is in the Banyan K Development, commercial plan development portion. The area in the red there is the 10 acres, a tract L2. Access to the Banyan K CPD is from a separate access off Congress Avenue, not through the lands of the President's. This simply shows you the outline of the 31 lots. Originally, we had 30. We did some redesign, picked up one more lot, and now we're moving forward as discussed with the plat. There is a condition in your staff report. Prior to public hearing, going to the City Commission, all outstanding issues regarding the reconstruction of Lift Station 77 shall be resolved with the City's Engineering Services and Public Utilities Department. We're in agreement with that condition. Greg Fagan is our project engineer, has been coordinating with the engineering department. They're in design right now of that lift station, and bonding, if necessary, will be done to accommodate the construction. Just to give you an idea, the lift station's actually on the other side of Congress Avenue, where you see the arrow in red pointing. It is an older lift station. As part of the Banyan K Development approval, they committed to reconstructing it to increase the capacity, replace it with new updated equipment, and they'll also be replacing the generator associated with the existing lift station. Again, this is the master plan for Banyan K. It's, if you recall, there were 94 units at the north end on Congress Avenue. That was a separate residential plan development. Those units are all either CO'd or under construction, and we're moving forward now with the 31 lots here and the other lots on the other side. The hotel is in progress. They're hoping for a December opening. It's a fairly short presentation, just to replat, so available for any questions, if you have any, or any comments.
Okay, any questions of the applicant? Thank you so much. We hear from staff.
Good evening. For the record, John Roach, Principal Planner for the city. I don't have anything to add. I feel like Ms. Brinkman covered everything in pretty good detail with regards to that. I do just want to emphasize that it is consistent with the existing approved master plan, so they're not asking for anything different, simply creating the individual, single-family lots within tract L. It's staff's opinion that it complies with the subdivision standards as outlined in our staff report, and therefore, we are recommending approval of it, subject to that one condition. And the reason for that is because in order for these single-family homes to come on board, we need to make sure that that capacity is available. So that's the basis for that, and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
Will anyone from the public wish to be heard on this application? Please come forward. State your name for the record. Sir, have you filled out a card yet?
I have.
Okay, terrific. Please proceed.
My name is Stephen Joseph, and I'm a resident of Ginberry Way, which is part of the residence at Banyan K, the first development that has been developed alongside with the golf course. I want to start by saying that myself and my neighbors, who I polled extensively, are all very much in support of this new phase of the construction. But we do have a concern, a fairly significant safety concern, for the end of Ginberry Way, where many of us are living, and where we have many families with children living. The site plan for that part of Ginberry Way has a gate at the end of it. That gate effectively makes Ginberry Way a dead-end street. Ginberry is almost a one-mile-long street, 0.8 miles long. Today, there is a construction easement and a temporary cul-de-sac at the end of Ginberry Way, actually on the track of land that's being approved today for development. That's temporary for the construction in the residence at Banyan K. That cul-de-sac is used, besides for construction vehicles, it's also used as a turnaround for delivery vehicles, more importantly, for trash trucks, most importantly, for emergency vehicles, ambulances and fire trucks. When that area at the end of Ginberry is closed off, and tonight, as we left Ginberry, there was a gate, a temporary gate, at the end put across Ginberry tonight. We can show you a picture of it. If a fire truck needed to come down Ginberry Way tonight, that fire truck could not turn around. If an ambulance needed to come down Ginberry Way, it would need to back up almost one mile to get off of the street. The current site plan shows a gate at the end of Ginberry Way. We've been told repeatedly by Banyan K Dev LLC that it is their desire to put gates in there, and to essentially gate off the new community from the residents of Banyan K, the older community, which is just being finished up now. We're terrified by that. We see it as a significant safety issue. Now, recently, in anticipation, I believe, of this meeting, Banyan K Dev LLC has approached us, me personally, as a spokesman for the community, and I believe have approached the Planning Board as well, and said that they are anticipating filing a revised site plan that removes the gates.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments. Mr. Roach, you want to come forward and address his issue?
Yep. Again, for the record, John Roach, Principal Planner. So I'll explain a little bit. The items that are being brought up aren't specifically related to the plat that is before you, but I will provide a little bit of an understanding as to the concerns. When Banyan K was originally approved, the developer actually proposed that Ginberry Way, which is this intersection right here, where my mouse is, would be a cul-de-sac, and that the other road, which is known as Bainberry Lane, would not actually intersect with it. It would be two roads, very close proximity to each other, but they would not intersect. Staff actually conditioned the approval of the development, that these roads would connect, and that there would be that ability to go from one to the other. However, the compromise within there was that, at the end of Ginberry Way, there could be gates that would separate the two pods from one another, that, more importantly, that they would, it would still allow access out of Ginberry, but someone could not get into the residences from the resort pod over here. Regardless, there was a turnaround spot that was provided for in front of those gates, so that if someone did not have access, they could turn around within that driveway on Banyan K's property with an easement, and go back out the way they came, not having to back out. Additionally, anytime we put gates up across roadways or what have you, the fire department always has access through a Knox box.
Correct.
So that would have all been provided. The residences of Banyan K, the 94 lots to the north, contacted staff, expressed this concern about having the gates, period. So through conversations, I believe Banyan K reached out to them, and it is my understanding has agreed or is willing to pursue the option of removing the gates completely. But that administrative-
But you're saying all of this is not before us tonight? You're just getting this by way of background?
Right. This is just for the sake of information. That application to remove them hasn't come into staff yet, but it's my understanding those conversations are there. The gates are there, are allowed on the approved site plan, but there is a turnaround space that is required to be built if the gates are installed.
And you're saying the fire department, regardless, will have access?
And regardless, the fire department always has access through a Knox box that is a master key that allows them to get out if necessary.
All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Roach. Ms. Brinkman, do you want to just briefly address that before we take it back to the board?
Thank you. Yes, John and Mr. Joseph are correct. Actually, Banyan K's attorney and legal counsel have been corresponding with him back and forth, have been copied on emails. We have absolutely no problem in removing that gate from the master plan. We'll also be removing the gate at the end of Bainberry Way that connects to the resort way. This property is under contract. We don't want those gates there, so we are more than happy and are planning to amend the master plan with our next resubmit. We have a minor amendment in the process right now that'll remove all those gates.
All right, thank you so much, Ms. Brinkman. Does anyone else have any questions of the staff? Would anyone else from the public wish to be heard on this application? Come forward, sir. Have you also completed a card? And what's the name?
My name is Brian Lebel, and I'm also a resident of the residence of Banyan K. And just to emphasize the point, what we're looking for is a through street to make the connection from Ginberry Way to Bainberry, so that there is no gate for safety reasons. Right now, I will just emphasize that what we're hearing is contradictory to what we've heard. We're asking for some kind of written agreement on this from the developer, and as residents, it's a big safety issue that we'd like to make sure is addressed at some point in some way. So we want to be on the record for that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, anyone else for the public wish to be heard? Let's bring it back, then, to the board for discussion. What I understand with respect to the gate is number one, that that's not actually before us today. It's obviously an issue of concern of the neighbors, and we have representations on the record from the developer, the gates will be removed. So hopefully, that will be a non-issue. Does anyone else have any concern about this application we should discuss? And if not, I'll look for a motion for approval.
I'll move approval of Case 1624HH, subject to the one condition in the staff report.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you, ma'am. All right, then that brings us to Planning Board Case Number 1857B.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Planning Board members. For the record, Harvey Oyer of Shuttin Bowen, on behalf of the applicant. We have a fairly long presentation. Mr. Chair will move as efficiently as we can, but this is a large and exciting project for our community. I'd like to maybe frame this issue in a broader historical context. If you go back about a century ago in this community, we were fortunate to have some of our nation's most notable architects doing work here. Julian Abel, Horace Trumbauer, Addison Meisner, Marion Sims Wyeth, Maurice Fazio. And then we went about 90 or 100 years without that type of architect wanting to do work in our community. Today, we find ourselves at this, I think, extraordinary inflection point in the history of our city, where we have a project that's going to be presented to you tonight by the firm of Robert A.M. Stern, next door to a Lord Norman Foster project at the Norton Museum of Art, two blocks away from a David Childs project that is about to break ground. And we were here last month talking about Herzog de Murey and possibly doing projects at the north end of our city. So I don't want this moment to pass without some sort of acknowledgement of the wonderful place that we find ourselves in today. We are on the receiving end of probably the greatest wealth migration in American history, and it's coming to our community. And I think that's important for us to look forward as a community, what our future is, not get caught in the past. So when we talk about what should we be planning for, it's this type of unique opportunity that we should be planning for. So with that, I am delighted to introduce to you our team, give you a little bit of a roadmap how we're going to do this tonight. I'm first going to introduce Michael Harrison, who's the Senior Managing Director of the Heinz Company, one of the world's great development firms. He, in turn, is going to introduce Rob Frisby of the Frisbee family, that probably needs no introduction in this community, one of the most remarkable change agents in the history of our city. They literally, through the patriarch Dave, who is here somewhere, took a crime-infested, boarded-up Clemata Street 30 years ago, and cleaned it up, fixed it up, brought in the first Starbucks in the southeastern part of the state of Florida. Tommy Bahama's Banana Republic radically changed our downtown forever, which provided the tax increment that the city leveraged to create City Place, today Rosemary Square. So truly a pioneer in changing West Palm Beach into what we enjoy today. And these are the two partners in the project. They are then going to introduce Paul Whalen, the principal architect from the Robert A.M. Stern firm. And then I'm going to come back and talk about the technical piece, the waivers. So we are before you this evening, seeking a rezoning to a residential plan development with waivers. Thank you for your time and attention. I'm honored and privileged to be part of this team. So with that, I'm going to ask Michael Harrison to step forward.
Good evening, and I want to add my thanks to Harvey. We appreciate the honor to be here with you this evening and to present Flagler Towers. As Harvey mentioned, I'm Michael Harrison. I've been with Heinz for 31 years, and I'm the officer responsible for our activities in the state of Florida. Before I make a couple of comments about Heinz, I think it's important to share how we came to be partnered with the Frisbee Group for this exciting project. David Frisby, as Harvey mentioned, has been here a while, but before he was here, he was with Heinz, and he started his real estate career at Heinz about 40 years ago. I had the good fortune to work with him for several years before he left to start his own development company. As Harvey mentioned, he moved to West Palm Beach, and he and a former partner are responsible for the revitalization of Clemata Street 25 years ago. Given the long history we've had together, when David and his family approached Heinz about partnering with him on Flagler Towers, it was an easy and short discussion, and we're thrilled to have the opportunity to execute that project with them. With that, I just want to make a couple of comments about Heinz. As you can see from the slide, and by way of introduction, Heinz is a three-generation, privately-owned, real estate development and management company. We're headquartered in Houston, Texas, but we have nearly 5,000 employees in 25 countries across the globe. Over our 64-year history, we've developed more than 500 million square feet of real estate projects, and really have done that across all product lines. For those of you that are not familiar with Heinz, Gerald Heinz is widely credited with being the first developer to marry world-class architects and world-class architecture with commercial development. Heinz has worked with dozens of world-class architects, including Ramza, who is here with us tonight, Frank Geary, Caesar Pelli, Philip Johnson, and Lord Norman Foster, to name a few. In our industry, the equivalent of the Academy Awards is the Urban Land Institute Global Awards for Excellence. As you can see from this slide, Heinz has won this award 15 times. Notably, many of these projects are in secondary and tertiary markets, such as Minneapolis, Detroit, and Oklahoma City, where those projects help define that city's skyline. Also of note is that while he was at Heinz, David Frisby was responsible for two of these projects. I have also had the privilege of being involved with two of them, including one with David in Detroit. Lastly, you'll note that on the slide, although it's hard to count that quick, Heinz has been honored 15 times, but there are only 14 projects shown here. This is because the ULI also selected Gerald Heinz, the individual, to receive the Global Award of Excellence, and he's the only individual to receive that award in its history. This brings me back to Flagler Towers, where we consider it a privilege to partner with the Frisbee Group, who brings 30 years of local knowledge and a commitment to excellence and quality in the community, and we hope to combine that with 65 years of Heinz global excellence to deliver a world-class project for the city of West Palm Beach and its residents. With that, I'd like to have Rob, introduce Rob Frisby.
Thank you, Michael, and thank you, Harvey. Good evening, board members. My name is Rob Frisby with the Frisbee Group, and I am here with members of my family, my colleagues, and our incredible design team. We are excited to share our reimagination of two former Palm Beach Atlantic University dormitories, which are located on the waterfront along South Flagler Drive, representing one of the last and most valuable waterfront sites in this part of town, and which currently aren't on our city's tax roll. Let me just find the page down here. Got it? Thank you. We are here tonight because we believe this is a great investment opportunity from a financial standpoint, but we are also here tonight because we think this opportunity represents a great investment in our city and in our future. That type of outward thinking, ensuring that we are not only creating value for ourselves, but also for the surrounding community, is inherent in our family values and business ethics, and as Harvey mentioned, is indicative of the first investment our family made in West Palm Beach over 30 years ago. When my uncle Dave led a charge to revitalize our downtown and bring vitality and safety back to Clemata Street, Dave and his partners worked to aggregate a critical mass of properties, and through thoughtful design and programming, they added mixed uses, including residential on upper floors, and they transformed the corridor with leading retailers such as Ann Taylor, The Gap, and Tommy Bahama, and one of the first Starbucks in the southeast. That same level of innovation and outward thinking is what we hope to bring to the reimagination of Flagler Towers, and it's why we've assembled a world-class design team to help us rethink vertical development in our city. Namely, instead of following the standard tower-on-a-plinth scheme, where the vertical elements are the main focus, we have decided to prioritize the human scale and the ground plane, and to create a three-level podium that engages the public realm with townhomes, public plazas, and a café, and which transitions into the vertical components of the design. We are honored to work with Robert A.M. Stern Architects on this project, more generally known as Ramza. Ramza is famous for designing buildings that improve neighborhoods, with iconic architecture that is more walkable and comfortable at the street level. Ramza is also a leader in furthering a sense of place and community through their extensive knowledge and experience designing leading cultural, academic, and residential buildings. And that insight into academia, which is led by their eponymous founder, Robert Stern, who was the dean of the Yale School of Architecture for over two decades, we think is going to play an integral part in the design here, where we share a unique proximity to several cultural institutions, including Palm Beach Atlantic University. Ramza has been very successful in creating value in communities. 15 Central Park West is a great example of a Ramza building in New York City that brought tremendous value to a neighborhood- brought tremendous value to a neighborhood by elevating prices on the Upper West Side, and for the first time, they were equal or greater than the Upper East Side. And we think those same value drivers inherent in the timeless Ramza design will translate to our neighboring properties here in West Palm Beach. We've rounded out our leading design team with Stan Tech, Pembroke &amp; Ives, Urban Design Studio, SMI Landscape Architecture, Cozentini, Thornton Tomasetti, and Kim Lee Horn. Additionally, we've worked really hard through community outreach and early engagement to make sure that we were informing our neighbors every step of the design process. We've had over twenty-seven presentations to a hundred and fifty attendees, and we've received over seventy letters of individual support. We've also reached out to all of our neighboring institutions. We've given fourteen such presentations to over fifty attendees and have received twenty letters of institutional support. That represents a hundred percent of the institutional property owners within a five-hundred-foot notice boundary. Additionally, we've had extensive communication with our northern neighbor, a to-be-developed project called Forte, being developed by Two Roads. Over the last five months, we've engaged with Forte to explain to them and share with them our thoughtful design process, to ensure that they understand that every step of the way, we've been making sure that we're not just creating one successful project, but that our design is elevating values for their building and for our other neighbors. Our immediate neighbor outreach and support includes Palm Beach Atlantic University, Family Church, the Norton Museum, Memorial Presbyterian Church, La Clara, Norton Park Place, the Lake Worth Pioneers Association, and residents of the Bristol and the Trianon, all of which are supporters of our project. And as you can see on this slide, they do a great job of insulating our project. We've also had incredible collaboration with city staff, and we want to thank city staff for helping us to address over two hundred constructive comments over the last five months, which have resulted in a project that we think is truly going to be innovative and leading in our city. And with that, I'd like to introduce Paul Whalen, who heads up the Ramza design team.
We're trying to make this full screen so that the image isn't squeezed as you see it. Pictures are important.
Oh, sorry. Oh, I don't know. It's not allowing me to. Sorry. I don't know why it's grayed out.
So for some reason, it's not allowing us to go full screen, so I don't know quite what to do about that. The images, I don't know, I hope that the images are clear on your screens, because they're very squeezed up here. Everything will look thinner and taller, except me, which is sort of a bummer. I'm first going to talk to you about the site, and then I'm going to talk to you about the design that we have for you today. So what you see on the screen, compressed a bit, is an elevation of the skyline of West Palm Beach as seen from the intercoastal waterway. You see here Trump Plaza in the center, One West Palm on the right, and then we've indicated where the Flagler Towers would go on the left. This is an impressive array of buildings on the intercoastal waterway, and we see the addition of Flagler Towers as a very natural addition to this impressive array. In our neighborhood, this line defines the waterfront edge of central West Palm Beach. It's centermarked by Flagler Towers, the project that we're presenting to you today. The project is located at the intersection of two important open space systems, the Greenway of South Flagler Drive and Norton Gallery Park. We find that this is an ideal location for vertical growth. It is insulated by unique proximity to cultural institutions to the west and north, a tall development to the north, the intercoastal waterway to the east, Norton Gallery Park to the south, positioning the Flagler site as an ideal location for this vertical growth. The existing site conditions are incongruous with what we see as sound urban planning principles, as it is dominated by curb cuts, asphalt parking, and a lack of pedestrian access that detracts from adjacent communities. And those thoughts are shown with these images of existing site conditions, a lot of concrete, and then perhaps it's all best illustrated by this poor gentleman on the lower right walking on the street because the sidewalks are so inconvenient and hard to find. So the design itself. After careful consideration of the existing site conditions and the context of the surrounding neighborhood, we worked diligently to formulate a design that actualizes the allowable density in the most desirable way, not only for future residents of the site, but also for neighbors and the surrounding community. We want to share our thoughtful process with you now by beginning with an overview of the early design evolution. Oops, I skipped one. There we go. I think that most of you know, we all know, that the value of land increases the closer you get to water, such as the intercoastal here in West Palm. So naturally, we began our process by creating a building that maximizes its proximity to the intercoastal waterway, while positioning the building with a front setback off South Flagler Drive that was still within the code requirements. While in theory, this appeared to be an excellent scheme, we recognize that we could provide more light and air for our northern neighbor, Forte, and to better balance the massing of the site for the pedestrian experience. I'm going to be speaking about Forte a fair amount tonight, so I just want to clarify what Forte is. Forte is this building right here that I've got the pointer on, and is a building that's been approved but not built yet. And I'll be referring to that building because we took a lot of effort to take that building, that existing building design, into account as we designed the project that we're showing you today. So we went on from that preliminary design to a curved design that highlighted the ability of the site to fully utilize the open space afforded by the adjacent Norton Gallery Park to the south by orienting the massing to the southeast. But again, we recognized similar opportunities to create more south light and air for our northern neighbor, Forte, our future northern neighbor, Forte, and to balance the pedestrian experience. Hmm, it says, okay, title here. We went on from that to an S-shaped design that maximized our linear frontage along over the park and still faced out over the intercoastal and the ocean. We thought that this started to break down the scale. It was better for pedestrians, but again, we still had a kind of a problem in how much we were blocking views and light to the future Forte building. As our study evolved, we started to think about, that we should start to think about perhaps pulling the building apart into two pieces, and you start to see that in this diagram, where we were literally sort of starting to stretch things and see if we could make it into two buildings. And that is indeed what we ended up doing, and that's the idea that I'm going to show you today. This is not to be a dramatic unfolding, by the way, it's just what the computer's doing. So the early massing involved from maximizing waterfront proximity to creating a balanced site prioritizing pedestrian experience and maximizing light and air. And so here, you see a plan of the two towers that we're proposing today, and at the start, I'm going to talk about the West Tower. We pushed fifty percent of our entire massing completely to the west of this Forte Tower that I'm talking about, and as a result, they're actually impeding a greater percentage of our views than we are of theirs. While the West Tower could have been located within twenty-five feet of South Flagler, the South Flagler property line to meet code, or seventy feet from that property line to meet staff requests, we placed our Western Tower as far west as our site allows, between three hundred and forty-four and three hundred and seventy-seven feet from the South Flagler property line. Now, I use three forty-four and three seventy-seven as a range because our building steps, and that's why I'm using a range of distances from that property line. So counterintuitive to that waterfront proximity value principle, this placement better serves to balance the massing of the site, bringing vitality to the western edge and treating the west side more equally to the east while moving away from the more highly-trafficked Now, moving to the East Tower. By putting these two towers, by splitting the massing into two towers, we preclude pedestrians from ever experiencing the entirety of the massing when they're close to the project from one location, because inevitably, you're always walking towards one building and away from another building. In addition, the setback of the Eastern Tower is between a hundred and seventeen and a hundred and fifty feet off South Flagler, significantly greater than the twenty-five-foot code requirement, as well as greater than the seventy-foot staff request, which serves to further remove both towers from the public realm. The towers themselves also set back as they rise in height in a series of steps that create additional light and air for the project and for the neighbors. The separation of our massing into two more slender forms maximizes light and air, as well as direct south light for our northern neighbor, Forte, and of course, for our proposed buildings. We have located our front door, as well as our entry drive, on the northern boundary. The drive is lined with a lush canopy of native sea grapes that separates the site from our neighbor to the north, and also extends the greenery currently proposed by their master plan. And also, this drive also privately connects Flagler Drive to Currie Crescent, making, frankly, a very convenient drive for future residents of this project. In the end, the project is innovative in its ability to successfully prioritize the pedestrian experience in a vertical development, and I'm going to show you how that works in the following slides, the following images. First, the continuous urbanism that we're creating will improve the street-level experience and will serve to pull the waterfront esplanade across Norton Gallery Park to the Norton Museum. And at the same time, it will draw pedestrians from South Olive Avenue towards the water, strengthening the connection between a burgeoning arts district and the South Flagler waterfront. Clearly, we're carefully considering urbanism in this neighborhood, not just bringing new residential product to West Palm Beach. In the existing site, the number of curb cuts is about seven, and we're reducing that to four. Hold on, it's coming. And by doing that, we leave the three most important public streets uninterrupted for pedestrians. It's all about, pedestrians, of course, are the secret to a successful city or community. We also surround the site with abundant landscaping and the widest sidewalks in the And finally, so the site faces three important streets, presenting a real challenge to any design team, but because our team loves community-making, we saw this condition as a great responsibility and an important opportunity. We rejected the traditional terraced base idea with this louvered parking ventilation and obvious garage space. Rather, our response is to disguise the parking and line these streets with active uses, including a park, a public plaza, a café, and a street of townhouses on the park. The architectural variety that supports this blend of uses will result in a project that creates the comfortable, human-scaled urbanism that can be found only in the most successful The existing site along South Flagler Drive is autocentric, with an abundance of asphalt and narrow sidewalks. We know we can all do better than that. What we're proposing there is a seventy-foot setback that gives space for a new waterfront park. You can see in the section on the left that we have a layering from South Flagler Drive to our step-down building at that point. It goes from a tree-lined walkway to a step garden to an upper garden, which will allow anybody who uses this garden, because it would be public, of course, to step up there and look down and look at the activity of pedestrians walking by. And then, as we move to the southeast corner of the podium, it engages South Flagler Drive, where that drive meets Norton Gallery Park, with a series of terraces that step down to a public plaza. This plaza space will act as a vestibule, in a sense, to the expanses of Norton Gallery Park. As a pedestrian comes down, they'll see this open plaza, it's unusual, and they'll know that something special is going to happen, and then they'll be able to walk across the street and go into Norton Gallery Park. And the result of all that will be a great, a human-scaled transition from the building down to the street level with shady trees, sunny spaces, such as the plaza you see in front of you. This plaza will feel truly public and inviting to all, with seating, a central fountain, vine-covered walls, a place that will be enjoyed by residents, neighborhoods, and really, everybody. It will not just be a kind of public place, this really goes beyond that. This is a place that's really inviting the public onto the site, as few places do. Now, looking along Diana Place on the south side of the site, currently, pedestrian pathways are limited, and the site is dominated by perking. Showing you a section again, Diana Place, and then a series of layers of landscaping that lead up to the townhouses that we're suggesting be built along Diana Place to define its edge. There are three stories of townhouses and an uninterrupted layer of landscaping and trees, including buttonwoods and wild palms, that were recommended by city staff. And here in this perspective, you see, I think, the real difference between our product and a variety of, and most taller projects that are being presented to you these days, and that is, while any tall project is going to have some people living up high and getting great views, we've gone through a lot of trouble to make sure that there are also people living really close to the street, that are living on the street, in townhouses. In this image, you see, well, in our fanciful depiction, somebody on the sidewalk waving to somebody up on a loggia, but this is a fanciful depiction, but that connection between people who live on the street and people who don't live in this building but are a part of the neighborhood is what we're after, and what we think we're going to get. It's just natural that when somebody lives right on the street and they're walking off the sidewalk into their front door, they're going to be mixing with their neighbors, they're going to be saying hello, waving at them, and as neighbors walk down this public sidewalk, they're going to enjoy the architectural character that we're providing on the base of the building, the highly-detailed architectural character that we're providing at the base of the building. I just want to note in here that this whole idea is related to the notion of eyes on the street, a concept that was popularized by the famous urbanist Jane Jacobs as a recipe for successful neighborhoods that also feel safe. Of course, feeling safe is the first thing before you get a successful neighborhood. And now, on South Olive Drive to the west, the existing sidewalk's too narrow and the street largely devoid of activity, and what we're proposing is a residential, another residential entrance here, and also outdoor seating at our proposed café that will activate the street, and will, together with enormous relocated live oak tree, which we're moving about thirty feet to get it right on axis with a perpendicular street, will provide a great environment at all times of the day, particularly in the late afternoon when it gets hot over there, this wonderful tree will cast a shade over everybody who's sitting at the sidewalk café. Now, to look at the building in its entirety, we start with the human-scale architectural elements of the base that will connect the towers to the surrounding streets, and then, while the towers rise up in a series of comfortable steps, creating outdoor terraces for residents, and opening sightlines for neighboring buildings, and going all the way up to the top to sculptural crowns that will mark these buildings' location on West Palm Beach's skyline. The articulation of the building's facade will complement the architecture of nearby residential neighborhoods, and we made sure of that by looking at those neighborhoods carefully. We looked at loggias and pergolas, we looked at charming storefronts, landscape that combines with architecture, balconies and bay windows, distinct entrances. These are all features that we've put at the base of this building to make sure that it really fits. And here, you can see in a series of images from this rendering, loggias, bay windows, front doors right on the street, and the way that all that architectural residential character will enliven this place. The crowns of both towers reprise the scale of the street, because we love the idea that somebody on the street can understand the scale of a top of a building. But they will also mark this important location with sculptural features that we think of as a gift to the city's skyline. The result will be a seamless continuity of residential urban scale from the base of these buildings to their crowns. It will become a modern landmark and will contribute to the development, to the developing skyline of West Palm Beach, as well as to its neighborhoods. But we're confident that the buildings, while we think people will love the towers, that what people are really going to remember are the street fronts. They're going to remember what they're going to love the most is what they see day-to-day, what will be right next to them as they walk around this block to go to the museum, as they're riding on their bike and their skateboard, and they're next to these super-comfortable, highly-detailed elevations that will make it a pleasure to enjoy this neighborhood. Thank you very much, and Harvey is now going to come up here and talk to you about zoning requests.
So that leaves to me the really boring task of going through waiver requests, which is very technical, but it is part of our request. So the first part of our request is a rezoning to an RPD. So the first part of our request is a rezoning to an RPD, which this board is very familiar with, very common practice, innovative use of land, more efficient use of land, widely recognized in the zoning world as a better way to handle unique projects such as this one. So the first part of our request is an approval for the RPD, and it comes with a nine waiver request. I'm going to walk through each of those one by one. The first is the code, and probably something archaic in our code, requires a ten-acre minimum for an RPD, which probably made sense decades ago when we still had land available in West Palm Beach, but as this board well knows, there are no ten-acre assemblages east of ninety-five, and every tower building that this board has approved in, I think, the last twenty years that I'm familiar with, has all required a waiver. And so we too are seeking a waiver to the ten-acre minimum. You'll note that our three peer buildings on South Flagler Drive, Forte, Bristol, and Leclerc, all had less acreage, at one-point-three-eight acres, three-point-two-one and two-point-four-five were fortunate enough to have three, almost three and a half acres. So our waiver request is less than what has been granted by this board and the City Commission to our peer group to, on South Flagler Drive. It'd probably be wise for the city to amend that ordinance, since I'm not familiar with any residential development that has met the ten-acre requirement in two decades. Now, in order to grant the minimum area waiver, you have to make a finding of one of the three, that the particular circumstances justify the reduction, and there's simply no more land in this area to acquire, or we would have acquired it, or requirements for the residential plan development zoning and the benefits to be derived from such zoning can be derived in a lesser area. And I think what you've heard and what you will hear about the unique and innovative design and efficient use of this land more than justifies the second requirement, that we can derive the benefits from a lesser portion of land, which after all is a more efficient use of our now very scarce land, particularly along the waterfront. And finally, permitting such lesser area for residential plan development zoning is in conformity with the comprehensive plan, and it absolutely is, of a number of elements, policies, and goals of our comp plan, which is to find the highest and best use of our land, use it efficiently, not sprawl, and to derive the greatest value and provide the greatest public service from the least amount of land possible. And it meets all of those goals, objectives, and elements. So that, I think, is pretty basic. I'm going to go through what I would also consider fairly minor technical waiver requests. The first one is for maximum wall height. There is a six-foot maximum wall height in residential zoning districts. We exceed that technically on the red rectangular box area, which is about sixty-eight percent of our northern property line, and that is occasioned for several reasons. One, we have a seven-and-a-half elevation, a seven-and-a-half-foot elevation change from Flagler Drive on our eastern property boundary to Curry Crescent on our western property boundary, so it's going up a natural hill. Moreover, in order to meet our, not only FEMA requirements, but our desire to build a resilient building that regardless of climate change that is on its way, that this building will be a safe, habitable building a century from now, our lobby starts at nineteen feet. So we have to take this driveway that connects Flagler Drive to Curry Crescent, and we have to go from a low elevation up to nineteen. And I'm going to demonstrate two cross-sections that will help illustrate what the, what I characterize as a technical problem. This is at the eastern end of that red rectangular box. If you look in the upper right-hand corner and you see the red mark, that's where this problem, meaning the waiver, begins to occur. So this, circled in red in the center of your screen, is the wall in question. And you'll notice that this wall, according to the code, is measured from its bottom, which is underground, subsurface, that cannot exceed six feet. Well, once you get above ground, folks, there's another code provision that says you need to have a wall of a certain height so people don't fall over the side. It's called a crash wall. So the only way you can comply with both of these code provisions is to seek a waiver from you. These are commonly granted, so we are not choosing to put a big wall here. We are putting the code-required safety wall. It's just for technical purposes, it is measured from three feet under the ground. Now, let's move further west, and this is at the point of greatest non-conformity, which is in the middle of the north property line. You can see in the upper right-hand corner, that red box, that's where this occurs. And we put this in here to show you the point of greatest non-conformity, which is where that six-foot wall is a fourteen-foot wall, but you'll notice the overwhelming majority of it is all below grade. Ladies and gentlemen, that's the retaining wall separating our project from the neighboring project to the north. And the only part of the wall that is visible to anyone, again, is that code-mandated safety wall, so no one falls over the side, or a car from our driveway does not go over the side. You'll also note that there is landscaping both on the north side of the wall, which is part of the site plan approval for the Forte project, and there's landscaping on the south side of the wall. If we were to change this and move that drive further away, it actually creates more of a problem, because the wall becomes more visible. So this wall is visible by no one, from any public right-of-way, it is not visible from Forte, it's not visible by our residents. And again, it's all occasioned by natural elevation changes, compliance with FEMA, and compliance with code provisions for the safety wall. So again, I'd characterize that as a...
Harvey?
Yes?
I believe you're talking about waiver number three, not number two.
Yes, our presentation, are you matching it to the staff?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, a good, good point. We are, because these are relatively routine waivers, I'm saving the big one for the end, if that's okay with you?
Yep.
Okay, sorry to take it out of order. Good point. The third waiver in our numbering system, not on your staff report...
All right, all right.
...is the number of access points. As this board well knows, you can only have two access points per right-of-way, but as Paul Whalen very artfully described, the whole design concept here is to create a thousand feet of uninterrupted pedestrian experience, all the way down Flagler Drive from our northern most entry point, the entire Norton Gallery Park area along Diana Place, and everything along Olive Avenue. So these are three public right-of-ways, three important parts of the public realm in this part of the community, and our goal was not to punch a bunch of vehicular access points out onto all of those public roadways, putting the pedestrian, the baby stroller, the roller skater, in conflict with a vehicle. So this was very purposeful, the way it was done. It was to take all of the traffic, all the vehicular traffic, not pedestrian traffic, but vehicular traffic, off those roadways. And to do that, you place an additional access point on Curry Crescent. You will note, which Paul Whalen noted, there are currently, the current condition is seven access points. We are removing three of them entirely, and we are removing them along Flagler Drive and along Olive Avenue, so that we can make that a safe pedestrian experience, wide sidewalks and over landscaped. But to do that, we had to create another one on Curry Crescent. And so you will see that there are three there, we are seeking a waiver to allow the additional one. I will note that the, the new one, which you'll see in the bottom half of your screen, the one that is not circled in red, that accesses a segregated parking garage that only parks twenty percent of the site. The other eighty percent of the parking is in a separate parking garage, again, all buried within this active-use liner, so no person will ever see a parking garage. So the one we added actually accesses the least amount of the project, and therefore will have the least amount of the project. I will also note there are only two folks that are burdened by this, us, the applicant that's asking for it, and Memorial Presbyterian Church to the north, who is here tonight to endorse our entire request, including this waiver request. Our next waiver request is the separation of access points, which is a corollary to the prior one. The code requires that you cannot have access points within one hundred and twenty-five feet of each other. Of course, you're hard-pressed to find anywhere in the downtown that that is not violated, and it's by the nature of needing to have access drives. I will note that the waivers being required by staff are for access points that are already there. So we're not asking for new access points that occasion this waiver requirement, they're already there. What's interesting is our neighbor to the north, Forte, has the same problem we do, which is their access points are within one hundred and twenty-five feet of our access points. Ironically, they were never required to get the waiver that we're now being asked to get, which is the separation from their driveway. Find that interesting. But in any event, very common in projects throughout the city. This is another corollary to that same issue, and that is what's called a buffer strip interruption, and this is really getting in the weeds, but you have to have a landscape buffer along your public right-of-way, and the code does not want that to be interrupted very often, for obvious reasons. And because we have three access points on these two legs of Curry Crescent, we exceed the twenty percent maximum requirement for landscape buffer interruption. Again, this is created by the Ramza design of trying to get these access points off of Flagler Drive, off of Diana Place, and off of Olive, so the community enjoys the public realm more safely. Again, we could have punched these through and had two entrances onto Flagler Drive, two entrances onto Olive Avenue, it would not serve the public interest, it would not serve our neighbors. So this was very intentional, why it was designed this way. I'll also note that while we exceed it here, two sides of our project have zero percent. Olive has zero percent, Diana Place has zero percent, and we have a very minor percentage for the existing curb cut on the north end of the project on Flagler Drive. So if you take a look at the sum total of landscape buffer interruption, it's about five percent. So in its aggregate, we are far below it, because, again, we've moved it off of what we consider to be the most important pieces of the public realm. Our next waiver requirement is for landscaping. I want to provide you a bit of backstory, because you've probably seen few projects come before you with more landscaping than this project, but we are actually under in the number of trees, and I want to explain why. We are retaining all the existing native trees on site. We have been asked to create this public space along Flagler Drive, which you can see on the right-hand side of the site plan, which has both active and passive public spaces that are quite wide, seventy feet wide, completely available to the public, the active space. And we could have filled that with trees and easily met this requirement and checked the box. That doesn't do much for the public. What we were trying to do, or what the Ramza Standtec team was trying to do, is make this truly useful, not one of these little corner clip pocket parts, parks, that checks the box for the code, but really does little for the public. And to do that, we cannot fill it with trees. Instead, the city staff asked us if we would go into Norton Gallery Park, which here, along Diana and along Acteon, have ficus benjamina trees there presently, that seem to be dying off due to whitefly one by one. And their future fate is, well-known what that's going to be. And the city staff asked us to, at our expense, remove all of those and replace them with native green buttonwood trees and royal palm trees, which we have agreed to do. And if you account for those, which are off of our site, we are actually creating twenty-two more trees than required by code. Additionally, we have a native landscape requirement of sixty percent, we're at seventy-seven percent, so we exceed that. We are required to have eighty-three shrubs on our site, we have one thousand nine hundred and forty-seven, let me repeat those numbers. We're required to have eighty-three, we have one thousand nine hundred and forty-seven. So while we are technically deficient, twenty-six trees on our site, I've explained to you why, it's at the request of the staff, creates a better design, a better public realm, and we are more than replacing them immediately next door, which now ties and glues our public realm into a much-improved Norton Gallery Park public realm next door. Additionally, our code requires that our trees be a minimum of twelve feet high, all of our trees, on both our property and Norton Gallery Park property exceed that. In fact, the native sea grapes that line the drive aisle on the north more than double that. When they are planted out, they will be a minimum of twenty-six feet in height. I will also point out that these trees are not coming from a nursery, they're not a line of lollipops that look like they were put in yesterday. They are all being handpicked by the landscape architectural firm, which is Sanchez and Maddox, I'm sure you know them, they're best-in-class in our community, so that we have aged trees, fifty-year-old trees, so they look like they've always been there. So we have far exceeded any standard that I'm aware of in West Palm Beach for landscaping. Nonetheless, it creates a waiver request. We also have setback encroachments for awnings, balconies, and bay windows, almost all of these, all of these are de minimis, from eighteen inches to five feet. And this is because the design is not a big tower on the hill, it is occasioned by Ramza doing exactly what Paul Whalen explained, which was bring the human activity to the street edge, so this feels like the neighborhood that is nearby in Mango Promenade and El Sid. In fact, these three-story townhouses are very similar to the three-story townhouses about a block away on the west side of Olive Avenue. And to bring human scale to the street edge, you have things like balconies that hang over the sidewalk, things that we, let me see why this is taking a long time to come up, but things that you would commonly see in the downtown, for example. Most of those are cantilevered over the public right-of-way. Let's try this again.
It's a hint for you to cut it off.
Ouch. I wish I could. Tyler, Roger, do you have an idea why these are not coming up? That is many steps ahead, I think. Let me see. Okay, here we go. In any event, I, we had another illustration in here that shows you the cafe on Olive across from the Norton that illustrates, I think, best these awnings that protrude into the sidewalk, again, creating better public use. Okay, so you asked why they're out of order, this is the big reveal. It is the, what I think will be the controversial one. All the ones I've covered, the eight that I've covered, I think are nuts and bolts, nickel and dime, very common waiver request. The one that usually creates the most consternation in the community is what's called a side setback waiver, which is another way... waiver, which is another way of saying height, because the way height is calculated in this zoning district is you get two feet of building height for every one foot of side setback. And so what I'm going to refer to as side setbacks, you're going to know in common parlance as, as height. So let's stop and talk about this. This slide illustrates our peer group, Bristol, Forte, Leclara, and our proposed project, and gives the relative acreage counts. And I want to denominate this in several different ways. So I think no matter which way you look at it, you'll understand that our height request is not only justifiable and in context, but actually arguably lower than what it should be. So let's first look as a function of lot size. So if you look at a waiver request proportionate to your acreage, Flagler Towers is asking for 104.71 feet of height per acre. Forte is more than double that per acre. They have a small site. They have 1.38 acres. We have 3.4 acres. The Bristol was a little below us, 90.65 per acre, and Leclara, a little bit above us, almost 120 feet of height waiver or side setback waiver per acre. So the average of our peer group is 142.55 feet of waiver request per acre. You can see that we are well below that, and we are below two of the three in our peer group, and half, less than half of Forte are immediately adjacent neighbor to the north. Let's look at what I think is a big mitigating factor that, in addition to the last slide, and that is, we are blessed with a 2.23-acre public green space immediately to our south. And what does that do? That drastically mitigates the waiver request on the south side, because there's, the party that would be most affected by it is very far away. And so we gain the benefit of being located adjacent to this public green space. Let's get into some more technical detail. A lot of numbers on this screen, but let's go through them. You'll see on the top half of the screen in red what the waivers were for the Forte project, which is the most recent of our peer group along South Flagler Drive, approved two or three years ago. And in blue, you will see all of our setbacks. Now look at the chart to the right. The required setback waiver, you'll see that we are asking for the waiver on two of our four sides, on the north and on the south. We are not seeking a waiver from the east property line or the west property line. In fact, we very drastically exceed the code requirement for a setback. You'll notice our peer group in the next row, Forte, needed a waiver on all four sides of their project. Leclara, which is the line below that, needed a setback waiver on three of their four sides. And the Bristol, also on three of their four sides. So again, we are seeking a waiver on two of our four sides. Our peer group needed more. And look at the, the chart beneath that. This is the percentage reduction. If you look at the percentage of side setback requirement, which is the only way you can look at this, ladies and gentlemen, you can't look at this as an absolute number, 200 feet, 300 feet, 400 feet. Our code does not speak to that. The code is dictated solely by side setback in our zoning district. So if you read your staff report, it says, "Staff won't support anything above 300 feet." It probably referenced that two dozen times. Ladies and gentlemen, that's not codified anywhere. That is a custom that has been followed in these other three projects on South Flagler Drive. It is not in the code. In fact, there is no absolute height maximum in the code. So I want to dispel that. There's nothing mystical or magic about it. Thomas Jefferson didn't put it in a founding document. This is just what has happened in the past. But I would assert to you that we should not be looking at our past for what is the best planning and land use of our city. We should be looking to our future. And our future is very different today than it was three years ago, five years ago, eight years ago, or even 12 months ago. It's radically different. So there is a significant change condition in our community. So let's look at the specific requests that we're making. You can see in the bottom row that we are seeking between a 77% and 85% waiver. You're probably wondering, well, which is it? Is it 77 or is it 85? Well, the staff and the code, I guess, have required us to consider the below-grade parking. And the below-grade parking is 15 feet off the property line. No one's ever going to see the below-grade parking. So not sure that should be applicable, because the entire purpose of this side setback waiver is to protect your neighbors on the sides. So if you look at where we actually have above-ground building, we actually have a 41-foot separation from the north property line, and that's where the 77% comes from. On the south property line, it's 90, it is 92%. And you're probably saying, holy cow, that's a really big one. Well, think about what we're trying to accomplish. We are trying to put the townhouses and the human beings right up on the sidewalk, and that's what we're doing. Also recall that we have over a two-acre public green space, that we are the beneficiary of immediately adjacent to the south, that is protecting and buffering our neighbor from the south. So that's a little bit misleading of a number. You'll also note in, in the first row of numbers, the third one over, that this board and this city commission has previously granted a 93% waiver, where there was nothing put up on the street edge to activate the street edge, where there was no two-acre public green space to protect the folks on the other side. So if you want to talk about the high watermark of granting side setback waivers on South Flagler Drive, the high watermark is our neighbor to the north, Forte, at 93%. And the only one of our requests that comes anywhere near that is on the south side, where we are very intentionally trying to put our active use on the sidewalk, and we have the benefit of a dramatic green buffer between us and the property owners to the south. So when you add all this up, if you skip over to the column on the right, Forte has a total of 294% of their property is a waiver request that was granted by you. Leclara, 242% of their property was a waiver request granted by you. And the Bristol was 173% of their property was a waiver request granted by you. Ours is at 177%, lower, dramatically lower than two of our peers, little bit higher than the Bristol. If you look at the average waiver request percentage for the entire peer group, it's 236% of the property. Again, we're at 177%, so we're 59% below the average. I think these are important, different ways of looking at this issue, because it was portrayed only one way in your staff report, and that one way was, there's something magic about 300 feet. There's not. And that they've never granted a waiver greater than 150 feet. Well, that's a pretty simple explanation. You've never had a three-and-a-half-acre property come before you. So as a function, a, of two, one foot of setback for every two feet of height, the bigger the piece of dirt you have, the bigger the canvas you have to work with, obviously that number is going to change. So if, going back to a prior slide, if we were to utilize the average of 142.55 feet per acre, we should be in here asking for a 485-foot building. If we were to use proportionally what has been granted to our neighbors, we would be well over the 356 feet that we're seeking. And in fact, it was my advice to my client to seek that. And it's my advice to you and the city commission, you should approve that. You want to know why? Because we have a scarcity of waterfront valuable land like this. In fact, this may be the last assemblage in the south end of our city. And we are in the midst of this massive wealth migration, and whether you know it yet or not, you're going to know it soon, some of the names of the investment firms from Wall Street that are moving not a few employees, not a few hundred, but a few thousand employees, that are all going to be demanding luxury housing like this. And you know what's going to happen, ladies and gentlemen, when we cannot provide it in our city? They're going to go to Palm Beach Gardens. They're going to go to Old Palm, Old Marsh, Seminole, Lost Tree, Jupiter Island. You know where they take their money? To those cities. You know where their kids get enrolled in school and where they join the PTA and the Rotary Club? In those cities. And we don't capture those people, huge intellectual capital, and put them in our city. And those are the people that bring businesses and start businesses. And let me tell you what they're going to do. Their offices are going to be in downtown West Palm Beach. So every one of those folks that we forced to go to Palm Beach Gardens, they're going to come down I-95, and during the AM peak, they're going to drive eastbound on Okeechobee Boulevard, where we already have peak hour traffic issues, and they're going to turn around in the afternoon, and they're going to drive in the PM peak westbound on Lakeview, when we could be locating them two blocks away from their office, and they could be walking this. They could be part of our community. They could be in our schools, improving our schools. So they, their money, their brain power, and their tax revenue go somewhere else. And I'm going to talk about tax revenue in just a moment. So juxtaposed, you can see on the left was the original proposal that we put forward, which included townhouses here to activate the street. We were asked by staff, which we complied with, to push that back 70 feet and create more green space. We will have the widest sidewalks, which are eating out of our property, by the way, not out of a public right-of-way, paid for by us, not concrete, but tabby. We will have far superior landscaping to enhance a public realm and create what is four-sided architecture. We don't have the lucky benefit of our three peers. They had one public right-of-way they had to address, Flagler Drive. We have three. What a challenge for a design professional to have to design a project around three front doors. But you know what they did? They exceeded that. They created four front doors. Maybe the best view of our project is our northern property boundary. That is the arrival experience. So they have internalized all ventilation, all mechanical, all parking, and created four sides of a project that all look like the front door to the public. Now, I put this slide in here for a reason, because you can see what they started with on the left, which is what would have maximized their profits, their square footage, and what has resulted in our request to you tonight on the right. And I want you to think about when you drive by the Bristol, spectacular building. In fact, that was the door opener to get all these billionaires and wealth to move to our city in the first place. Maybe the single greatest economic development move in the history of the city of West Palm Beach was you all approving the Bristol and the developer taking the risk in developing it. Out-of-the-park home run of a project, which is why we're here talking about this one tonight. But when you drive by the Bristol, you feel it. It's on top of you. Go drive by Leclara. I think it's topped off, so you get a feel for the mass of that. You know you're driving by a tower. If you look at Forte's plan, it's yet to break ground, but it is a tower setback, so you look across a green space and see a tower. By contrast, let me walk you around our project, so you know what this feels like to the pedestrian and to the vehicle. And why is this important? Because it goes directly to this height waiver request. If you can't see or feel the height, what difference does it make if it's 356 feet, 456, 556? We are just wasting valuable land, tax revenue, and opportunity by not utilizing it. So let me walk you around it. This is what you feel as a pedestrian at the proposed project, that you don't feel at any of our peer group. This is your Flagler Drive experience. And I would assert to you that the only way you can ever see the height on this property is to dive into the intercoastal waterway, swim out in the middle of the channel, and look back, and then you will be able to see the height of this building. Let me walk you around the building, starting at the southwest corner where you see the number one. That is the corner of Diana and Olive. And you can see in the lower left-hand corner what that looks like to the pedestrian. As you move east along the sidewalk, and we've removed all the landscaping and all the colored canopies and all the pretty stuff, so this is not what it would actually look like. So this is the most imposing the building could ever feel. This is what you feel as you move east down Diana to number three, which is the corner of South Flagler Drive and Diana, which I just showed you in the previous slide. Now go to number four, your dead center of the Flagler Drive side. Do you see a big building? You do not. And if you crossed over Flagler Drive to the sidewalk, you still would not see it, unless you craned your neck back and looked straight up in the sky. Now go to number five in the upper right-hand corner. This is the experience when you're coming south down Flagler Drive and looking at the northeast corner of the project. Now move to number six. This is where you would think we would put our back-of-the-house operation, right? It's the only portion that's not facing the public realm, but this is the grand arrival experience. This may be the prettiest part of the project. And finally, moving to the other side, to the Curry Crescent side, I don't know why I'm doing that, you will see the northwest corner of our project at Curry Crescent and Olive. And finally, number eight, this is the café, sidewalk tables, people removed, so you just feel the building mass. Sorry, guys. Now, this shows a cross-section of our city. Again, this speaks to the height issue. And you will see our proposed project at 356 feet on the far left. You can see One West Palm Beach, the tallest building in the city, at over 400 feet, that's topped out and hopefully finished soon. You can see to the right of that what we were here for last month, the debate that we had about the height in the Seamud District, and this group approved a height up to, in fact, you unanimously approved it, of up to 350 feet in height, basically what we're asking for on the south end of Flagler Drive. And you approved that in an area where there are no other tall buildings right now. We're asking for it in an area where there's already a peer group of tall buildings. And then, of course, just to the north of that, in the Raibovich Project, is almost at 400 feet, again, exceeding our request. So let's talk about what happens if we let these folks scatter and leave our city. These are extraordinary numbers. I know this is a lot of numbers on the page, but shaded in green is the tax revenue that would be generated by this project. You'll notice the very last line is $21 million a year of ad valorem taxes. Above that, in bold, is 8 million, thank you, is $8 million per year in ad valorem taxes just to the city of West Palm Beach. Let me try to put that in context. That would be 9% of all the ad valorem taxes collected by the city of West Palm Beach in one project. That's 109 residences. Let's compare it to the next highest taxpayers in the city of West Palm Beach. The Bristol is the high-water mark. They paid $3 million in ad valorem taxes last year. We would be more than double that. Two-City Plaza, 1.8. Phillips Point, the entire Phillips Point complex, both towers, 400,000 square feet of waterfront Class A space, paid 1.7 million. Trump Plaza, 1.5. Palm Beach Outlet Malls, 72 acres of traffic jam, 1.4 million dollars a year. City Place Office Tower, my office building, a million dollars a year. Esperante, 967,000 a year. St. Mary's Hospital, a massive campus owned by a for-profit operator, $500,000 a year. What could we do as a city with 8 million more dollars per year? What could the school district do? Do you know how cash-starved they are? That we would put, their mileage rate is higher than ours. So this 8 million would actually be a higher number to the school district, not to mention South Florida Water Management District, Everglades Restoration, enormous financial opportunity for our community. Now, let's drill down even further and just talk about the 56 feet of height that is the delta between what the city staff said they'll support and what we're asking you for support for. So just the top 56 feet, the most valuable 56 feet. That on its own would generate 1.8 million dollars of ad valorem recurring annually to the city of West Palm Beach. That is more than all of Phillips Point pays per year, more than all of the outlet malls, all of City Place Office Tower, all of Esperante, and all of St. Mary's Hospital, just in the top 56 feet. So when we have a discussion tonight about what is the appropriate height, I think that we have more than demonstrated that it is justifiable, it is completely mitigated. Times have changed radically since this artificial 300 feet was created, and 300 feet is nowhere in the code. in the code. This is a percentage-side setback that we are below what you have already granted the other three projects on South Flagler Drive. And to swing and miss and whiff on this, you never get a redo on this. You don't get to come back and say, wow, we made a mistake. If our logic is you can never build anything taller than the last building, we started with a one-story building on Clematis Street in the spring of 1894. That's what we would still be as a city. We built the Harvey Building at 10 stories in 1924. Why did we not leave it at 10 stories forever? Because we evolve as a city, just like we evolve as a human race. And we strategically think about our next opportunity. And ladies and gentlemen, this is our next opportunity. And we will all be sorry if we don't embrace this opportunity. And as I advise my client, I would have asked for the 485 feet, because you wouldn't see that either. And imagine what these numbers would look like if we did that. We believe we meet all eight standards for a rezoning. Staff agrees with us on all of them except this height issue. And so I want to have in the record that I think we have more than demonstrated the change in conditions that necessitate the rezoning, how this is an innovative use of land, the most efficient use of land, completely in compliance with our comp plan. The staff has asserted no evidence whatsoever that it's not in compliance with the comprehensive land use plan, nor have they provided any evidence that there's been no change in circumstance other than we're choosing to look backwards at the past instead of forward at our future. And I would ask that you please look forward into the future. I am delighted to state that we enjoy the support of every one of our neighbors except one. And I'm going to walk you through this. Palm Beach Atlantic University, our neighbor, fully support it, including the height request. Family Church, our neighbor, fully support it, including our height request. The Norton Museum of Art, our neighbor to the west, fully support it, including our height request. And Norton Sculpture Garden, just down the street from us, fully support it, including the height request. Largest developer in our community, the ones that are bringing all these jobs here and need to house these people somewhere, and would like to have them within walking distance of One Flagler, for example, that is breaking ground here in the next couple of weeks. Related companies support it, including the height request. Here's a great irony. Our only other competitor in this space is Leclara. That is Great Gulf. Great Gulf supports our project. The Dixie Business Association supports our project. What is referred to as the Norton Gallery Park, that two-acre green strip, is also known as Pioneer Memorial Park, because that was the original burial ground for the first pioneers of our community, the settlers that were here before West Palm Beach even existed. They collectively, as a group of families, own the land where the Norton is today and all of the green space down to the water. While they generously donated that land to the city so Ralph Norton and his wife could create the Norton, they own a reversionary interest in that land. We have the support of the Lake Worth Pioneer Association, which owns the reversionary interest. You'll see that that is signed by their first vice president, Vince Burkhardt, who you all know. Our most adjacent neighbor other than Forte is Memorial Presbyterian Church. They support the project at the proposed height. So ladies and gentlemen, I think we have more than amply demonstrated that we justify an RPD, all nine waivers we are seeking, and that this is worthy of your unanimous support. And that is what I would ask for. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to deliver to the city clerk 60 more letters of support. I know that you've already received 15 or 20 through the portal system. We stand ready to answer any questions that you have, and I would like to reserve time for rebuttal. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Let me start on this far end. Oops. I'll start with you. Any questions? No questions. Okay, thank you. Can we hear then from staff?
For the record, Eric Schneider, principal planner. And, oh, let me get my presentation up. All right, so I'm going to not go over the entire thing that Mr. Oyer just went through, since staff supports the majority of the items that are in the application and agree with the majority of the items. So what I do want to talk about, and I'll just go through a little bit, obviously you saw the site. There's actually 12 waivers requested, not nine as stated by Mr. Oyer. It's in the staff report. You can see there's nine, and I'll touch on that in a little bit. Seven at-grade townhouse units, 91 condominium units within the towers, and 11 guest units. I don't think that was brought out in the presentation. As well as, they walked, he walked you, the entire team walked you around the improvements they're doing along South Flagler Drive, South Olive Avenue, Curry Crescent, and within Pioneer Memorial Park. So staff has recommended approval of waivers, but in the staff report are waivers number one through number seven and nine through 12. We do not agree with the waiver that Mr. Oyer went over at the end of the presentation for section 97, 94-77.8.3, the height setback for the sides, as requested by the applicant for the proposed 356-foot-tall building. I know Mr. Oyer touched on it, and it is in the backup material. Staff would support the 150-foot side set, the waivers that are required based on a lower building height of 300 feet, which is a 150-foot setback would be the base for the waivers as opposed to 178. And I'll go over that a little bit more in my presentation. So then, we also, based on the existing building that's before us, do not find that standards four and eight are met in section 9432. The backup material's in your present, in your report, and I will touch a little bit of it in the next couple of slides. Once again, if the project height is reduced, the exact building, they took it down those 56 feet to 300 feet, then staff has found that the project would meet the, all eight of the amendment standards. So we're not arguing any of the architectural, the design elements. It's purely the height of the building and the setbacks that are forced because of that. So one of the waivers that the applicant did not mention in the report was there's a wall height, an additional wall height waiver. It's number seven from Curry Crescent. Curry Crescent is a front property line where it runs north-south. It's kind of that notch. Part of it is a side, corner side, part of it is a front. This is, you see in the green, the 25-foot setback that's required for a front. You can't go over four feet of height for a wall. However, as you can see, they have a wall that is nine feet. And I want to clarify, Mr. Oyer had talked about the north property line wall and the setbacks, and that it was only the 42-inch wall to keep people from falling off the edge. The zoning code requires that we measure fence heights and wall heights from the exterior property line. So that is why they need waivers for those 14-and-a-foot-high grade differences for the retaining wall that they've put up along the north property line at the highest point along Forte, or I guess it's actually eight-and-a-half-foot waiver. It's the, the height of the wall is based on, the 14-and-a-half is based on that from mean gray, mean sea level. So anyway, the wall, as you can see from the sidewalk, is actually within the first 25 feet, nine feet tall. It is set back 10 feet six, where it gets to that point, the initial part right there, the initial retaining wall for that landscaping is at four feet, which meets code. Staff is not in opposition to this request, because at that 10, almost 11-foot's point, the pedestrian would not feel that wall, because they do, and they're seeing in this rendering a palm tree in there, but they also have some other landscaping. So it is, you don't get the feel of the nine-foot wall, retaining wall that's there, which is putting up some planting area at their deck for their entry to lobby and above their lower-level parking. So that's, wanted to clarify that that is waiver, oops. Also wanted to point out that, as I mentioned, the applicant said nine waivers. Actually, staff's waivers, nine through 11. The applicant presented as one waiver, and those would be the waivers for their individual code sections, for the balcony, the bay windows, and the awnings are all separate line items in the code. So therefore, they're, while the applicant handled them as one waiver, they're actually three separate waivers. That's what, that's where we get to the 12. I also want to mention that the number, the first waiver about the acreage, you and me, and I didn't put it in my report, I apologize. You do need to make a finding that the, specifically that if you agree, that the 10-acre minimum can be reduced. So that's a procedural thing that's in the code. So, and staff does not object to that. So, okay. So the height and setback. So the applicant mentioned setback waivers from the surrounding properties, and the percentages through that out there. Well, if you go, if you look at their project, on the south side, it's 15 feet. The north side is 15 feet. That's not just the base of the tower, the first level, but all the way up the tower at the closest point. So this table is not averaging out across the site of, it's the closest point of any of those buildings, and you kind of, the required setback on the left based on the height, the closest point at grade to a side property line, and then the waiver percentage, and then for the tower, the closest point to a property line and the waiver percentage. So you can see that actually the Flagler Towers project, I've highlighted the two yellow, yes, at grade, there's a seven-foot wall, a, of the parking, the first level parking, same situation as from the Forte project, the same situation as this project has where their project, their parking is at grade. The applicant said that it's not at grade, it's below level. It is at grade. They built that retaining wall that needs the waiver, because they put the, they backfilled between the retaining wall, it's now at the property line. Forte did not do that. They set back from the property line seven feet, and then they have the retaining wall go up for the first level of parking. Therefore, at one corner, it's at seven feet, which would technically be at their closest point, 95% waiver requirement from a side setback. Flagler Towers has a 92% waiver requirement for their first level at the 15-foot. And then at the tower, you can see their tower of 15-foot side setback at their closest point is significantly more than any of the other towers in the area have for a side setback at their 356 feet required. So backing down to the 300 feet, which is what the city commission has approved on the other three towers, both Leclara, which was the modern, and the Bristol came in at above 300 feet. Through the approval process, both of them were approved at less than that by the city commission. And that's what staff has based their statements on in the past. I've mentioned it in the background. That's where we told, and discussed with Forte when they first came in, said, look, commission's gone for, directed us to, you know, to, for 300 feet is the max. They came in at 300 feet, and then they built their project around that. We mentioned that to the applicant, and they wanted to move forward to bring it to the city commission after talking to you guys, or having your, hopefully, they're asking for your recommendation as well, but they want the city commission to raise this above the 300-foot that they've approved on the other projects. So that's the height setbacks. So the amendment standards, and they're really based on the height that they have, and the first one is whether and the extent to which the proposed rezoning is inconsistent with the existing and proposed land uses. While a residential plan development and a residential tower at this location are not inconsistent, based on the surrounding heights of the buildings that have been approved, the taller towers and the setbacks that they've been granted, staff feels that 356-foot-tall residential tower is inconsistent with what's in the area, with the existing and proposed land uses, as well as some of the other lower-scale buildings in the area. Once again, based on the city commission 300-foot, we would find that in compliance with this building, the exact same building is at 300 feet. The next standard, my fingers are moving, oh, there we go. The next amendment standard, that at the existing building, whether the extent to which the proposed amendment would result in an orderly and logical development pattern and the specific identification of any negative effects of that such pattern. Once again, all three of those towers are approved at 300 feet or less in height, after going through the approval process, two of the three coming in at higher than 300 feet and being reduced by the, before the city commission would approve them. So therefore, because the orderly pattern, logical pattern's been, that the city commission directed through their actions was no hot buildings taller than 300 feet, staff finds that this building, as proposed, does not meet the development pattern, the logical development pattern that's occurred in the area. And so we find that's not in compliance at 356, but would be at 300 based on the city commission's precedent. The, okay, so just want to point out, in pages two through four of the planning report, has some items that the applicant must address before being scheduled for a city commission meeting, regardless of the planning board recommendation. Those are technical in nature. And then pages four to eight have items that are be included as development regulations as part of the final Flagler Towers RPD, if approved by the city commission, regardless of what the height of the building finally comes in at. There's such as, you know, the building, some building design issues, building construction stuff, et cetera. Just wanted to show you, and the applicant's architect, I believe, has been, was one that brought this up about relocating the tree. This is one of the issues that needs to be addressed. The arborist that the applicant hired, and this is a, it's not a designated specimen tree, but it meets all the qualifications as their arborist, in their arborist report verified, and I believe I attached that to your background material. The tree, the canopy of the tree is about this big, about in the green circle around on the north, kind of the northwest corner of the site at Curry Crescent and Olive. And you can see it on the right-hand picture in side view. And this is actually a little older photo. I didn't have an up-to-date street view of it, and my pictures don't come out very well. So I used this one. The one, the arborist recommended that the tree does not get relocated two times. What would be required by the proposed plan of moving it over 30 feet, they said, which would be actually in the picture on the right, closer to the foreground? While that could work and move one time, the issue is that the arborist said that they need to have a 60-foot setback for the construction activity, which that tree is so large and the design of that building would not lend itself to having that. So the arborist's recommendation is move the tree, either leave it in place and setback, or move it one time somewhere. Well, moving it one time in this location, while it would be great, and staff commends the applicant for wanting to save this tree, if it needs to be moved, I think that there would have to be some kind of design issues to make sure that tree's protected, or it needs to find a home, that its final home away from this. Unfortunately, because of those power lines, we've been told that it'd be very difficult to move it west of Olive, and it would have to find a home south or north along the, between Flagler and Olive, but that we haven't figured out where that location is. That's one of the requirements we have before city commission to find out what the final disposition of this tree, as well as the other trees that are going to be relocated off-site during construction. One of the problems we've had is, is trees not making it, and so we need to have a better plan. Another thing the applicant did not touch upon, they did touch upon that the waivers and that are being, staff is not in opposition to, and based on the engineering department's review of the driveway cuts, the driveway separation, maneuvering in Curry Crescent, similar things that Forte was granted to the north of this. But in order to do this, I'll show you the exact, there's parking spaces on the south side of the Memorial Presbyterian that currently exist. None of the turning radiuses that they, or movements that the applicant showed, showed those cars being, the trucks being able to do that if there was a car parked there, and especially with the loading that's right across, kind of where that open driveway you see now. So as part of the review, the parking spaces along, that are on, along Diana Place, along the south side of the property, which are now angled spaces, are going to be reconfigured to parallel spaces in addition to the spaces removed along Curry Crescent, and they're going to end up in a row of parallel spaces on the south side of the townhouse unit, or entries to the townhouse units that the applicant has overlooking Pioneer Memorial Park. This, staff thought this was a great idea. In fact, we suggested it, that they look at this, and then when they had, well, when they had to take and replace the parking spaces, and as well as the trees that they're replacing in there, and that sidewalk that they needed to have to access their units, because this is a private piece of property. It's not a right-of-way, it's not, it's not designated as a, as a street, as a park. It's called a memorial park, but it, so this is land that, all these improvements, they had to get the approval from the pioneers. The Norton signed off on them, but they have, because it's city property, they need to get agreements, and those are written in, before they get the building CO'd, that are written into your backup material. So anyway, just wanted to point this out, and I think this does, does a great job of improving with the parallel parking in front of those townhouse units and the sidewalk there. That does give it a more of a city feel, and I, we, staff does agree with the applicant on the improvements that they've done along the north side and the south side of Diana and And I, we, staff does agree with the applicant on the improvements that they've done along the north side and the south side of Diana and Acteon, the wider sidewalk and the fronts that they have along South Olive, the open area along South Flagler Drive. And they showed you all that. Harvey walked you through all that stuff. We're not in disagreement. We don't disagree that the project has benefits to the area, except for that height. So anyway, that's staff's presentation. Do you have any questions of staff?
Okay, any questions of staff? Let me start on this side.
I do, I have a question about kind of obviously the main issue here, which is this 300-foot. You know, I guess it's kind of pattern, I guess, as you're describing it. In your presentation, you described that kind of the commission, I guess the city commission had kind of instructed you, the city staff going forward to not go above that 300-foot, whereas in the written presentation, talk more about like a precedent. So I guess it's kind of a two-part question. One is like a little bit of the history of, was that this body, was it the commission that kind of, what that instruction was that kind of gives you, is it an instruction or a precedent?
Well, it's based on the city commission's decision. They didn't look at staff and point at me standing there because I did, I've done actually two of those three projects. I did, the first one was the modern. Staff recommended denial of that project. It came in, I want to say in the 350 range, I didn't go back and look at it. Had unit sizes that are comparable to this. As the applicant showed you their original plan, on their, their lot is smaller. So based on our height, over, when you go over 40 feet, you have to do two feet once. So they came in, they were, staff recommended denial and went through the city commission process. The city commission also made them come back and chip it down and did not recommend approval until it got under 300 feet. And the setbacks came in a little bit, the unit sizes got smaller. The Leclerc project is actually, when they came in and amended that plan, the height's the same. The setbacks are generally the same on their tower. The podium changed a little bit on the setbacks and they did shrink the tower a little bit because their unit sizes aren't as big. So that's where the first one, same thing when the, I didn't do the Bristol, but the Bristol did go through city commission, came through and actually the planning board recommended it taller than 300 feet. The city, after city commission going through multiple iterations, it ended up at the 291 feet or whatever it is now. That one, also like this applicant presented that they're against the park where there's no immediate neighbor on the south side. The Bristol, where it had some of the setbacks I showed, they've got the water on two of the three sides. So, and then when the Forte came in, they probably reluctantly went through the process at 300 feet. I mean, they pushed it to 300 feet and capped it at that, knowing that that was where staff was going to draw the line at, you know, support, not support, based on, I mean, we reviewed all the other factors that go with the site, the setbacks and, and had conversations with them about a number of items that we had with this applicant. Mr. Royer said we had two, or the architect, that they started with 200 different things that we, the developer that we talked and, and other features that went into the site. We had those discussions with all the developers and to get to the projects the way they are. So did that answer your question?
It does. And then maybe just one other question. It's almost kind of a hypothetical and I'm sure I'm going to embarrass myself for missing kind of some of the foundational point. But if there were a larger site, so this is a three-acre site, let's say there were a 10-acre site where, which there are none, as Harvey think, said. If, if, and it were, you were able to have the setbacks such that it could, they could have a 500-foot building, just based on, based on kind of how far away they were on each side, just in some kind of, you know, take the extreme example, would it be the staff's position that would still be limited to 300 feet? In other words, like is 300 feet just the rule?
Well, I think, oh.
From the staff's perspective, it's like 300 feet the rule in this part of the city. And that's true whether, in this case, they're, obviously they don't have those setbacks by right. They need those waivers for them. But if, if, if there were, and maybe the answer is they won't even have, you know, the city couldn't challenge them or couldn't stop them from building a 500-foot building unless, but that's, to the extent that there's really just a 300-foot limit, it seems like that should be more codified than, you know, than kind of, where it seems more like a standard.
Okay, and we have had multiple projects. As Mr. Royer pointed out, there's a lot of projects that have asked, residential plan development for towers, all up and down Flagler, that have asked for the 10-acre minimum because you cannot, probably not find one for 10-acre minimum. Well, but what results in that then is the lots are smaller, so they're not going to be, good God, 500-foot tower. I'm just saying, 500-foot tower.
You're not going to have that, I know you're not going to have it on the speaker side. I'm saying if you did.
A lot of, almost every one of them has asked for this waiver of varying degrees. The family church to the north of this property is, or to the north, a couple of blocks north of this, and I don't have an area that goes far enough. They have that huge surface parking lot and the church. That as an entirety could probably have setbacks that would go and let a big tower be put on there.
Right.
If they came in, staff might not like it, but if they could come in with a 500-foot tower and meet their setbacks on the sides, and it's only the sides, they could go as 25, or as close, you know, on the front. And they could meet all their other requirements and have a surface parking and everything else, they wouldn't even be coming through this process of a plan development because they wouldn't need to ask for the waivers. We're here because they're asking for waivers of those setbacks. And that's where, once it got to city commission, they didn't want to see on these smaller lots in this area above 300 feet. As Mr. Royer pointed out, it's the Marina, Marina something or other that's, where Reibovich is at 45th Street. Those buildings were approved at taller than because they felt that the conditions there merited that those towers could go higher at that point. Here in these ones that came through and came in at higher and were reduced by the, you know, when the city commission made their final approvals, that's what staff is basing on it here in this location. If they came in somewhere else, we would be looking at it somewhere else and we don't use, well, we allowed, you allowed it at North, on North Flagler. Downtown has the buildings that are taller than this. Those, this is a different area, it's a different animal. So I, did I answer your question?
Yes, thanks a lot. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Ken, any questions?
It's kind of pigging back on that just because do you feel like you guys opened the precedent for these higher buildings, given the fact of Curry and, and further north? I mean, all of these buildings are tall buildings in an area. And then staff presented to us recently in an area where there are no buildings, a height similar to that. So I guess I'm trying to remedy how if this is sticking on the fact that commission is asked, not really demanded, asked, that we stick to this precedent, but then you all bring in something higher than that in an area that doesn't have any of those tall buildings, how we're supposed to look at that and try to weigh those differences?
Okay, I'm not the Curry mixed-use district expert. I did do some early on when it first came out and there was eight-story buildings there and it kept rising was every, as progressively people wanted more. My understanding is that the city commission directed staff to look at raising the building heights in there as part of this go-round with the project, as part of the project that Mr. Green has been moving forward. Based on, my understanding is that the, they went to city commission and the city commission dropped the heights that were, that you guys saw down to 350 feet. And those are incentive-laden to get there. So while I don't know the specifics of it, and that actually goes back to city commission in two weeks from yesterday, and then we will find out what the city commission wants to do at Curry. Obviously, this case, should you recommend approval, recommend denial, recommend with staff, recommend against staff, whatever your recommendation is to move forward, it's going to go to the city commission and the city commission is going to make that determination, what they want to see in this area as well.
Just to follow up with Eric said, Angela Van Penning is on administrator. Staff did not recommend the change to Curry requirements. The applicant, Jeff Green, who owns the majority of the property, is the one that first came to staff and the commissioner with the, I think it started at 400-foot building, tall building. So it was not staff. He initially came in and then staff with the commission directed us to start working with him. So I want to just make that clear. It was not staff. It was actually the owner of the property who was the first one to come to the city and asked that they get a increase to the height in Curry. And Curry is a whole different district. You're talking about a mixed-use district that was written specifically with incentives to get height. You have to, technically you give some, you, to get your height, even in the old code, you are actually required to meet certain incentives in order to get height. So you have a base and then you go up, as opposed to when you get on the outside of downtown and on the south end of Flagler, where you can basically come in, do innovative and meet the setback requirements and ask for waivers. So it's a little too totally different areas to say that in terms of it's not necessarily the same.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a couple. Are we done? We talked about the tree, Eric, for a second. I've always used a drip line as a setback line. What is the arborist for the applicant is asking for?
The, the arborist for the applicant, and I, it was actually on your computer backup, not in the packet. I included the arborist's report and I did not bring it with me, but I believe it said a 35-foot diameter, no, radius from the trunk of the tree. So for the protection from construction activity, so that, you know, the crane doesn't swing around and boop, there goes half the tree. I mean, that's the concern that we had when we looked at that and based it directly on what the arborist said in their report.
Yeah, when you look at the shadow, it's, it's at least 25, 30 feet anyways.
Yeah, it's big.
Yeah. Can you bring up the initial slide you had over the retaining walls? So, no, the other one with the higher, did you have another one?
Oh, no, that was in the applicant's presentation.
Oh, okay, so even.
I can bring it up, it would just take me a bit to get there.
No, that one's fine. Is the city recommending any type of fencing on top of these two walls? Because you have a four-foot drop on both.
These here, this was, there's no pedestrian activity on these walls. This is just total planters, so.
Oh, so they're raised to begin with?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's just dirt to fill in. As you can see, the parking on the, the, and because of the grade elevation change on this property, at this point, you can see that the level-one parking here is a little bit below the grade of Curry Crescent, which is the road to your left. But if you continue on, it is elevated above the, where Flagler Drive is. So if you pull, you drove it straight, took it straight out. One of the things in our waiver, what we, what we're going to have, what the applicant needs to provide back, I said there's some things before city commission, is that wall along the north property line to give us these dimension tags in NAVD at the top of the wall so that we can set it at that. Because we kind of know what the, we do know what the grade is on the Forte project to the side at different elevation points. So it's going to be, when I, when they come in for permit, I can look at the wall and say, this is the exact wall and not just, we gave it eight-and-a-half-foot waiver, but, and in fact, one of the applicant's drawing, they, they didn't show the, the fill that's brought in on the Forte side correctly. So it makes the wall look actually higher measured from the outside than it truly is. So that's one of those conditions we have. The grade elevation changes on both this site and the Forte and then the relationship between the two, both east-west and north-south, presented challenges for both projects. And we've tried to mitigate how those, or equalize those to make it easier going through the permitting process. So the, and describing what it was through the approval process of what we're looking at. Because this 20.6 is not 20.6 feet above grade. The grade elevation that we're starting here is seven feet, seven inches. So that point is actually, how we're measuring is what, 13 feet, 12 feet, 11 inches, not 20 feet, six. So we, all those numbers are, have been baked in here and why the, where we're at with some of these things. And if you look at the different, the dimension tags, and we're trying to make sure that all of them are aligned the same way.
The revised parking on Diane Place, is that something the staff can handle or should we make this a condition?
Oh, this is already on the plans. Oops, right here. Diane Place, that's, this is, the bottom drawing there is from their plans.
Oh.
So one of the things that our stormwater engineer is one of the conditions and has a concern with is when they came through with this, the pitching of the road and the drainage, more technical than I can address, crowning it versus sloping it one direction and putting in inlets, which aren't, they need a little more. And so there's, you know, engine civil will talk to our stormwater guy and they'll get that ironed out, I'm sure, quickly.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. John, any questions?
I have a question.
Okay, I had a couple of questions. First, I want to observe that I think staff should be really commended for their work here. Even the applicant acknowledged that there were improvements that resulted from your guys' direct input. I know this is a huge project and so we're grateful for that. And I also understand why you feel the need to defer to these past decisions the city commission made. I get that. It's kind of like in the law. If a higher court rules somewhere, those of us in lower courts, we have to follow those rulings. There come circumstances though where a litigant could actually go back to that higher court and challenge it and ask them to reconsider how they've thought about in the past. That's evidently what this applicant wants to do. So putting aside for the moment your understandable reluctance to go against a lot of city commission decisions, looking at it fresh, just from a planner's point of view, the unique circumstances of this particular property, what is the exact harm of the extra 50 feet from your, from the city's perspective? And I'm asking you to, to put aside for a moment the direction you feel you've gotten from multiple city commission decisions. Putting that aside for a moment, is someone's view more directly blocked? Is there some other intrinsic reason why the height itself is wrong? As you, as you said, I think Kat had developed that argument and you too, Henry. There could be circumstances where it could be done of right theoretically and we'd have to live with those taller buildings. So what is the harm here? That's my question.
Well, I think that it's some of the design issues as well as to put, we're not arguing or we're not, there's nothing wrong with the base and how they've designed that on the, you could say the street sides, even though the south side's not a street side. One of the things early on that staff had a concern with was that tower and they didn't show it. They didn't, I mean, they, they showed you some of the renderings and it's not an issue that we're discussing, that we weren't challenging anymore. But that's, the western tower sits right, it comes straight up from the edge at 15 feet. Staff was not thrilled with that, wanted to push back. One of the things and is, is why we have and we're basing on some of the downtown regulations, you don't perceive the height as the tower gets pushed back from the, from the edge of the building. I disagree with the applicant in those pictures he showed walking around the site, which were cut off at just showing the base, that you would not perceive the height of the building. And that you would have to swim into the coastal because.
And I, I agree with you, those were cut off as the base. I guess if you're looking up and you saw 300-foot building right next to it, 350, would it be that much different experience for the pedestrian walking around it? That's my question, I guess.
From the standpoint of, staff did not support the, the height of the building on the, on the, on the modern when it came in.
Right. If you recall, this, this commission, I mean, our, our board initially turned it down when it first came to us and then later went to the city commission. So we've had those concerns in the past, but I'm just trying to better understand here. And I, I really feel how you may feel constrained. I understand that, I respect it and I don't question it. I'm just saying though, if we were starting fresh, just looking at the code anew and with this particular building, which has a lot of attributes, I think we can agree, is it, is there something unique about that extra 50 feet? Someone's view, for example, that's particularly harmed or is some aesthetic that's violated? Where we would say, hold it, this, this kind of, this is, won't work for our city?
Well, staff didn't make those analysis, didn't, didn't do the analysis on anything above 300 because the 300-foot.
No, and I understand, you, you felt constrained because of direction. You may have agreed with the city commission as well. It's not just that you got this direction, you may have personally agreed that that was an, that was an appropriate cutoff. I get that. So I just wonder if you had any thoughts, if the city commission chooses to look at it fresh and so right, and at this particular place with this particular development, is, is there some intrinsic harm with the extra 50 feet? That's the question.
I think the tower setbacks are still large for what they're proposing. If the towers were moved, and this is one of the things that I said in my comments early on, was moving the towers off, moving the tower of the north, I guess you would call it the east tower, which they moved away, which has always been further back off, does, you know, helps break that up. Having the tower come straight up along the park is not something that staff was ultimately excited about. It is a bit, the, the park area is, is wide, so it can handle that to a degree. It is a bit, the park area is wide, so it can handle that to a degree. But, that height is still impressive at this location.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Does anyone have any other questions, Patricia Snyder? If not, we'll start hearing from the public. Okay, I'm going to be calling out cards. I'm going to ask two at one dais and two at the other, the lectern, rather. So the first one I have is Julia Davenbust and Andrew Maimi on this podium. On that podium, we could have Judy King and Stephen, let me make sure I have the right one here, Stephen Harznett. Okay? So if you could come forward, you're three minutes apiece, we'll have a timer. We just ask you to please respect it, we have a lot of people wish to be heard tonight. Please come forward.
Sure. Hi, everybody, this, my name is Julia Deriband, and I'm speaking on my behalf, and Andrew Maimi also, who lives at the same residence. We are residents of Old Northwood, and we do think that this proposal was extremely thoughtful and would really benefit the city. So we are in favor of supporting this development fully, and we thank you very much. I'm going to try to keep it short.
I absolutely appreciate it. Thank you so much, for your comments. Okay, I called four names, I only saw the one person. Does that mean that Andrew M.A.I.M.A. does not wish to be heard? Oh, I'm so sorry, okay, that's great. Judy King? She's left? Okay, let's see if she had a comment, she does not. And you are Steve Hasnet?
Steve Harznett.
Harznett, forgive me. And then, before we ask you to begin, if on that lectern, okay, these, that's no problem. If we could have at this lectern Gregory Murmigas and Anthony Marallin on this podium, and following this gentleman, if we could have Rob Toth and Brandon Haluizy on that one, something close. The writing could be better, that's all I can say. All right, why don't you go, sir?
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Steve Harznett, I live at 421 31st Street. I'd like to start off by saying I'm very pro-development. I like to see the city of West Palm Beach grow and prosper and offer more amenities for the citizens. I think that the city has made tremendous strides in recent years, and I love the direction that the city's going. I see these developments as actually assets that actually will make West Palm Beach more important as a city, both locally as well as people potentially relocating from the northeast to the southeast, in particular, West Palm Beach. I was in favor of the Seamud modifications, allowing Mr. Green to build. I was in favor of the Raibovich products, and I'm in favor of this product. I think that the design is very thoughtful. I think the presentation given this evening by the developer, and even the detail that Mr. Oyer provided, that perhaps some of us don't fully understand, I think it shows that they've gone through great strides to make this, this development a, an asset to the West Palm Beach south end and the skyline. You know, people talk about this as though it's so far removed from the other downtown buildings. I mean, I think the one visual that was given that was taken from presumably the island showing the skyline, you know, puts it into better perspective. It really is not that far removed, just like LaClara is not, just as though the Bristol was not. So, I think the height, quite honestly, is not outrageous. I do appreciate your comments. That, is that extra 50 feet something that is going to be noticeable? Is it some reason that that is objective, oh, I'm sorry, offensive? I think the crowns on the buildings themselves are probably at least 30 feet of that extra 56 feet that they're requesting. So, you know, I love the, the design. I love the fact that at the base, it's more to scale. I love the fact that they've made provisions for the public to be part of that design, unlike perhaps the Bristol, which dare you try to go up the driveway, you'd probably be quickly escorted off the property. So, yes, please take this under consideration. I ask you to look at this in favor, and I hope we see some development on the north ends as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, I'm Greg Murmigas. I'm a homeowner on 31st Street in Old Northwood. And I'd first like to congratulate Razma and their partners for really coming up with a beautiful design. And I'd also like to congratulate the Frisbee Group and all of their partners for having the foresight to bring such an architectural firm on board to design what I think is a beautiful building. I would like to really take the task the city staff, because I don't understand where this random 300-foot limit comes from. I've not heard a good explanation of why that is, considering also what Ms. Ward said about Curry or Seamud, as well as the Raibovich projects being totally out of context. But I support those, but I don't see the, how that, that jibes with what we're doing down here, or talking about down here. I also am thrilled to see a large parcel of land that has not been generating taxes for generations, because it was educational, now coming onto the tax rolls and probably being the number-one taxpayer in all of the city of West Palm Beach. That's pretty amazing as well. And finally, in support, I would like to encourage you to approve the full 356-foot building as drawn, or as presented. I feel like otherwise, you're taking what I consider to be a beautiful, beautifully-designed building at 356 feet and shoving it into a 300-foot package. And there's an analogy that goes there with 10-pound bags, and I won't go there, but you see what I'm talking about. I really love the way it is presented, how it interacts with the public and all of the amenities that come along with it. So please, hear me, support it as presented. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Bronwyn Halliwell, and I'm a homeowner at 431 33rd Street in Old Northwood. And I am in support of this project. I think it'll add incredible value to our West Palm Beach community by numerous means. First is the added 8 million annual revenue for the city that'll go towards essential and much-needed community services, our amazing and revered first responders, as said, schools, parks and improvements, and necessary neighborhood improvement needs throughout West Palm Beach. And secondly, the project will add beautiful, excuse me, beauty, serenity, and connectivity into our community by adding gardens, plazas, native, excuse me, native foliage, and welcoming gathering space for the public. So, please vote yes for this project this evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
Hey, good evening, Anthony Marolla, Old Northwood, 443 33rd Street. As I've been up here many times in the past several years, I've really pro-growth and pro-development here in West Palm Beach, I want to thank all of you guys, because I think we've really have started to, to accept and understand the growth, especially from the northeast and even from the west coast of the United States, of what's coming down here, and how we do need to be prepared for that growth, and not let it go anywhere else as probably we've done decades before. I think this is an extremely thoughtful project. How often do you get prime waterfront property that's not generating tax revenue to bring in a tax revenue, but then also have that public awareness that you have that public open spaces? It's not just about a solid structure. I think we're, we're going back and forth on 50, 60 feet here, and, and to maybe your point that you were trying to allude earlier is, you know, how much of a difference does that really make coming from the ground? If you're looking at 300 feet or 356 feet, there's really nothing there to it. I've been in support of the Bristol and all these other projects that have been downtown, and I think between the public spaces and the landscape and what they're trying to do, it's by far superior over any of those projects that we have approved and that are breaking ground at this moment. As far as the tree, we'll take it in Curry Park if you guys want, if we want, we'll take it. But I do, I want to thank the Frisbee Group for really bringing in some world-renowned architects and groups in here, and it really just shows where this city is going by what we're trying to attract by developers like this. So, please approve this. Thank you.
All right, at this lectern, if we could have Charlotte Wright and Joe Verdon, and after this gentleman come forward, please. Are you ready to speak? After him, if we could have Tara Dowey, and then Dennis Grady at the other podium.
Hi, my name is Rob Toth, I live at 442, a homeowner at 442 33rd Street, Old Northwood as well. I'm, I'm for the project. I mean, we're, we're taking old dormitories that aren't bringing any tax revenue and turning them into reported 8 million dollars. But, I think that the important part is, not only the tax revenue, but you want to keep, you want people living here, spending here. I have a boutique money management firm, and I speak to these money managers in the northeast all the time, and the subject comes up about moving here. And housing is always the big question, is there nice housing? And there's no question, there's a need for that here. And it's a subject that comes up all the time, and we definitely need that, the high-end residential. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, members of the planning board. My name is Charlotte Wright, and I'm a longtime resident of West Palm Beach. I serve on numerous boards in the city, work with a large nonprofit, as well as a proud business owner in the city. I am here this evening in support of the proposal in front of you. This project will impact the community I support. I can appreciate what a project of this magnitude will do for our entire city. What I see before me is the opportunity to participate in the economic boom in our city, creating opportunities for all residents to benefit. If what I'm hearing is correct, this project will generate 8 million dollars a year that will go to our city. Those dollars can be used to fund projects and services we need throughout West Palm Beach. That means more police officers, more equipment for safety, and more road improvements and neighborhood projects. If the additional height gets our city more taxable value and revenues, then we should all be for that. If the neighbors affected by this height support it, the residents across the city support it, then we should all support it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Is Joe Verdon in? Okay, so you're next, go ahead, please come forward.
Yes, my name is Joe Verdon, I'm with the law firm at Carlton Fields, I'm a planner, a certified planner with over 30 years' experience developing in West Palm Beach. I am the planner of record for the Forte, and I was the planner of record for the LaClara at times. All four of those buildings, LaClara, the Bristol, the Forte, and even this project, they've all had this, managed the same requirements. That's a 300-foot limitation the city commission has put on these buildings. It put us at a great disadvantage if we have to agree to that and nobody else has to. So there's a matter of fairness here. I want to say one thing about the, the presentation, your plans that you're looking at today, yeah, keep hearing, "What's the big deal about an extra 50 feet?" Or, "What's the big deal about 300?" It's not really about the height, it's about what that height, where that height is on the property, and what it does to the property to the north. If you live north of a building, or east or west of a building, the sun is an impact. You are shadowed by a tall building. The taller that building is, and the closer it is pushed up to your property line, the more impact it has on your property. This project is placing a ton of shade onto the Forte project, damaging its ability to have a pool with sun, damaging its ability to have a outdoor area that's seating in the sun. I mean, this is ridiculous. They have shown that they have three, or four-sided architecture, but they only show you three. They show you the front, the back, with little Monet vignettes that show what it could look like in a world, in a flowery world that they've come from. I don't know what's going on. Staff normally requires accurate renderings, staff normally requires full plans, they always require shadow studies. I have never submitted a tall building without one. This is ridiculous, that there isn't one on the record. So if you want to know what's wrong with this building, it is, it's not set back, the north tower is not set back far enough from the east or from the north to provide sunlight onto our property. It is, they are asking for waivers to reduce that setback. We are not opposed to their height if they organize it. They have told you how great it is that there's so much space to the south side of the park, where there is no sun impact. But on the north side, they jammed everything up, including their access, their back house, they're telling you, "Oh, it's our beautiful front door," but they don't even care to render that to show you what that looks like. The set of plans that you have is poorly put together, it does not require, it does not provide enough information for you really to make any kind of assessment as to what the impacts are in the neighborhood, or whether or not these waivers are warranted. These waivers are providing an excess amount of height and creating a tremendous amount of damage on a property that's already pretty much sold, for the most part. I mean, we are 30, 30 units sold, but we have lost contract on the south side because of this. Alls we're asking for is for them to organize their buildings in a way that don't put a huge shadow on our property, protects our view sheds. That's all we're asking for.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. This witness will get five minutes as an attorney, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Chair. For the record, my name is Tara Dewey, I'm an executive shareholder with the law firm of Lewis Longman &amp; Walker, and I'm here tonight to represent Flagler Residential LLC, which is the developer of the Forte project, which you've heard a lot about, but not from me. I will do my best in my five minutes to rebut what has been said to you over the course of an hour and 15 minutes. Prelimarily, let's talk about height and the restriction. Let's be clear, we're talking about setbacks, and that's important to us as a northern property owner. We have not been shown evidence of the impact of this building to our property and project. I have seen multiple times, including in the justification for the waivers, how the applicant has minimized the view shed impacts and shadow impacts to my client's project and property. There is no evidence demonstrating that is true. If you assume the ability to mass a project at the scale that they demonstrated for you in their examples, and you don't discuss it with the neighbor, of course, you've picked the best alternative. It's easy when you don't have a conversation and you just have a presentation. So let's talk about that. To be clear, we are for development, we are developers. We are for the project, we just want you to apply your code and rules consistently. And precedent is important here, because you have a waiver process that looks at individual projects and looks for innovative design, and that is a wide-open criteria. It makes it a little difficult for people like me. But what you look at for that innovative design is consistency in how you apply it in areas. And your code requires you to consider the existing development pattern when you're considering an amendment change like the one proposed to you. Well, that existing development pattern has been determined by you already, when you approved the Bristol, when you approved Forte, when you approved LaClara. And you didn't approve them with the same height setbacks or waivers that are being requested of you tonight, in the same fashion. So importantly, let's talk about the size of this project, just scale. Why is it important? Yes, there is a lot of lower development on the pedestal. The lot coverage of this project is 68% of the site. The other, the other lot coverage of the other projects I mentioned, Forte, 29.2% at its widest point. LaClara, Bristol, similar, in the 20s. Think about that. That's a huge project. We care. So what we're asking you to do, as I approach my time, what I'm asking you to do this evening is to remand this, for them to discuss and evidence the impacts and minimize the impacts to our project. And I'm happy to answer any further questions, and I would ask your staff, along our northern boundary, we have not seen any depictions of that, of the plan over there, and the, and how that's going to play with our project. We've asked for it, we've asked for a number of, of pieces of information from your staff. In fact, it was only Thursday that I received the response to my public record request for the permit file. So I am at a little disadvantage here, not having had the benefit to review all this information prior to tonight's meeting. But with that said, I'm happy to answer any questions. And again, we do ask you to remand this for the, for the applicant to meet with us, as we've asked them to do, and we are in the process of scheduling a meeting, so that we can work out our issues with them and bring you a project that all of their neighbors support. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis Grady? And then at this podium, if we could have Jerry Amoyo and Bill Nugent at this lectern, and then following Dennis on that other lectern, Tom Soroco and Joanne Soroco. Go ahead, Dennis.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Dennis Grady, and I have worked in downtown West Palm Beach for little over 35 years, and still continue to work at a reduced pace at 401 North Flagler. The Flagler Towers proposal before you now would be a Class A addition to the city of West Palm Beach. This luxury condominium project consisting of 109 units will be a perfect setting to house many of the relocating business owners and CEOs choosing to move their companies to Palm Beach County. The Palm Beach Business Development Board continues to successfully attract relocators from the northeast and the Midwest. Many of these individuals are looking for a high-end residential product... Many of these individuals are looking for a high-end residential product like the Bristol for their families. With a world-renowned architect like Robert A.M. Stern, that is just what they will find in the Flagler Towers. This project, over four hundred million dollars in total cost, when completed, will become the largest source of property tax revenue in the city, as you have been told multiple times. This new revenue stream, however, I would urge you to remember, is gathered from outside the CRA districts. So this new seven to nine million dollars of tax revenue is not restricted to use inside a CRA district. It can be used anywhere in the city of West Palm Beach, especially in areas where the city can utilize that money to leverage, uh, expansion, development, and expanding the economic engines to areas that have lagged behind downtown and the south end. This project will also create over three hundred jobs during the twenty-four-month construction period and seventy-five to one hundred permanent jobs when completed. We do need to look to our future. The city commission, as stated by the chair, is the appropriate body to ultimately decide the additional fifty-foot question. They are not to be restricted. They have the authority, as all of you and I are aware, to make the decision best on what they, our elected representatives, deem best for the city in the future. I urge you to approve the application of Flagler Towers as submitted by the Frisbee Group in Hines and help our city prepare for the remaining ten years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Jerry Moyo. I'm a longtime president of the city of West Palm Beach and, um, founder and CEO of Great Cities for All. And I'm here today to voice my support for Flagler Towers at the height proposed by the applicant. You may notice, this is only the second time I've ever come before you, um, before, and I, I do so because I think this project, like the Seamud project, is critical to the success of our city. So I'm going to travel down memory lane a little bit, if you'll let me. When I first became mayor, my goals included bringing more tax dollars to the city and more jobs to the city. And this was especially important because we're just coming off the recession, um, and our, our property values had dropped between two thousand and seven and two thousand and eleven by thirty percent. So it was critical for us to bring tax dollars in and we were in desperate need of jobs here. I thought naively that to bring jobs to the city, I would travel around and I would visit, I would visit companies and I would convince them to come to West Palm Beach because it was such a great place to live. But I quickly learned from people who are a lot smarter than I, um, that the way to attract business was to make our city a place where people wanted to be, right? Um, and to do that, it would take some really bold decisions. We'd have to step outside our comfort zone. Uh, we worked on making our city more walkable and more bikeable. We invested in our parks. We took a chance and we worked with the developer of the outlet mall. We collaborated with the county to bring the ballpark of the Palm Beaches here. Um, and we were in desperate need of Class A office space. We created the Okeechobee Business District and in so doing have seen the development of One Flagler, which is nearly fully leased at the highest price per square foot of any building in Florida. We supported the building of the Bristol, which generates more tax dollars than the outlet mall. And when the Bristol, the developers of the Bristol first came to me, I was like, "I don't know about this project. I'm not sure." But then I thought, you know, they were going to invest their money in this and they probably knew better than I that they could sell this product. And in fact, they have sold this product. Um, this is, you know, these are things that, um, that we had to take a chance on. And sometimes you have to be bold and you have to step outside your comfort area. And, um, we have to leave the old thinking behind to create new opportunities. We have to. So today, um, you are faced with one of those rare opportunities to make a bold decision that might break the precedent that I'm not sure. I heard that maybe the city commission said, but, um, I'll only be a minute. Um, but to break that precedent and do something that will allow this beautiful project to be built, a project designed by a well-known, well-respected architect that will generate more tax dollars than the Bristol, tax dollars that will go directly to the general fund, a project that has the support of all of its neighbors, including the Norton Art Museum. So I urge you tonight to be bold, approve this project at the height proposed. Let the city commission hear this and make a decision. And thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Please proceed.
Good evening, members of the planning board. My name is Joanne Soroco and I've been a longtime resident of West Palm Beach. I'm here today in support of the Flagler Towers proposal. I love what the city is doing with the vision that the city has for various projects that are coming forward. This project is a culmination of the forward-thinking of the city that it has done with, with dozens of other project proposals in the past. Just last month, the city approved a similar request in height in the north end of West Palm Beach. Flagler Towers is surrounded by other tall buildings and brings millions of dollars to the city in new tax revenues. The project makes sense. It's the right location and we should not miss out on this opportunity to get something there here that will help our city financially for years to come in the future. Full support. The height request is the proposal because it will bring in that additional revenue we need, not to mention that there are already tall buildings that surround it. Please vote yes for this project. We need it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, planning board. Uh, Bill Nugent, resident historic Grandview Heights. Um, I live a very short distance from this project. I ride my bike, I walk, um, and I, you know, I go past this, the location where this project will be on a regular basis in my, my personal everyday life. I will be able to see this project when I look out my front window, sitting in my living room. I support this project. Um, I appreciate how they have created pedestrian connectivity between Flagler and Olive, i.e. tree-lined si- sidewalk that doesn't currently exist. I also like the way they wrap the lower floors and give pedestrians, i.e. me, a townhouse walking experience. I'm also looking forward, uh, to this project adding density with, uh, density with disposable income. Uh, that will support existing and future business along the Dixie Corridor where, nearby where I live. And a vibrant Dixie Corridor represents quality of life for those of us who would be neighbors to the Flagler Towers. Um, this is an amazing project that delivers tax dollars, connectivity, a sense of place that doesn't currently exist. Um, West Palm Beach finds itself in an amazing period of time, uh, with the economy and everything else that's going on. Um, the time is now. We have an opportunity to greenlight something that would really be amazing and benefit us all. I hope you will support Flagler Towers. Thank you.
Thank you. Is, um, let's see here. Oh, Tom Soroco, are you going to be speaking?
Yeah.
And he does write on his card, "I support project. Please support the height." All right. At this lectern, if we could have Dave Donald Burgess and Suzanne Frisbee, and on this podium, David Frisbee and Mamie Kizner.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, all the members of the planning board. I'm Donald Burgess and I'm the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce of the Palm Beaches. Today, I'm speaking in favor of the project currently under consideration. Both our Governmental Affairs Committee and Board of Directors have unanimously endorsed this project and recommend that the planning board approves it as presented by the applicant. Project architect, Robert A.M. Stern, is recognized worldwide for his design of residential buildings. And we believe that this project would be an excellent complement to South Flagler Drive and is of the same quality level as the Bristol. Consideration must also be given to the economic impact of the project. Annual revenues of approximately eight million dollars are anticipated, plus as much as three hundred construction jobs and up to one hundred permanent full-time jobs post-construction. It can also be expected that as we increase our inventory of residential units, we can likewise anticipate that the upward pressure on home prices will be somewhat relieved. There's no doubt that this project will benefit the community and the city of West Palm Beach. It is a tremendous opportunity and one that should be embraced. We therefore urge the planning board to approve the project as submitted by the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, um, planning board and chairman. My name is Mamie Kizner. I've been here, um, close to twenty-nine years in the city of West Palm Beach. I'm at one-one-one-two-eight-forty-seventh Road. I also wear several hats. One, I was the only African-American female on the senior team for the Bristol. So I've been before you many times. Um, we proved within the Bristol that a project can actually make a difference in the community. Um, if you look at the local and minority hiring statistics and the training programs that were done with the Bristol, we are hoping, and I have been in conversation with the Frisbee Group, that we will look at those things and we can make another additional impact on our community. West Palm Beach is a diverse community, multicultural community. That has to be reminded anytime any project comes before the planning or the city commission. That means it encompasses and affects all of the residents of this city. We have blighted areas within the walking distance of this downtown area, Flagler, um, that is like the northwest district. And we came here twenty-nine years ago, built fifty-three single-family homes, a five-and-a-half million-dollar community and education center that is now a clinic within the neighborhood. So we have invested, my husband and I, in Tabernacle, in this community. Tabernacle Missionary Baptist Church, which is, my husband's pastoring that church, is a hundred and twenty-eight years old. We're older than the city of West Palm. We were the first school for people of color here. So we have been investing a hundred and twenty-eight years in building this city. We ask that you look at this closely. We support it, but we want to make sure that any development that comes before the planning looks at local and minority hiring, that we have training programs, and we believe that we can work with the Frisbee Group and this is a great project. So please take that into consideration. We will be in front of the commission to make sure that all of those aspects of this project. But I am standing here tonight after conversation and I do believe that this group will do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Come forward, please. Is Suzanne Frisbee going to be speaking?
I'm speaking for Suzanne.
Okay. And yourself. Okay, you still only got three minutes. All right. And at this podium, if we could have Alex Mullin and Margaret Horgan at this podium. Go ahead.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Dave Frisbee, speaking for myself, my wife, and four generations of our family in this community. One, uh, my wife and I, for the last thirty years, have been passionate about doing the right things for our community and creating the community of tomorrow. And I would like to say that my teammates on this project have envisioned a project that helps us do what we've been trying to do for thirty years. And that's make West Palm Beach a literally a world-class city of tomorrow. And we thank you for your leadership and your guidance.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Uh, good evening. My name is Alex Mullin. I'm a local resident and real estate professional in West Palm Beach. Um, I'm fully in support of this project. I think that it's true world-class architecture that is, um, popping up in the city like this, that's making it an exciting place to live. Uh, when it comes to the height, I think the difference between three hundred feet and three hundred and fifty-six feet to the human scale really isn't that noticeable. And also, when it comes to the building crowns, you know, I think you want separation in height. You don't want everything to be at three hundred feet because then it doesn't create as much visual interest. Um, the tax revenue implications that this project provides are substantial and can certainly benefit the city. And I think that this is a true landmark building that will create significant economic and cultural impact. So I hope that you approve it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Um, Margaret Horgan, are you going to be speaking? She says, "The Anne Norton Sculpture Gallery," excuse me, Norton Sculpture Garden supports the Flagler Towers project. We believe in the importance of placemaking in our West Palm Beach community. We have reviewed the plans and believe the project will be a welcome transition of, I'm sorry, I can't read the writing here, building design in West Palm Beach and will complement the neighborhood." Okay? At this podium, if we could have, is it Asvaldo Mandarinos and Laurel Baker? And on the other podium, let's see, I've got Denise Williams and Francisco Gill. Please proceed.
Good evening. My name is Azimi. There's a, um, long ti- longtime resident of the city on Table Twenty-Six, uh, Dixie Highway. And I fully support this project and I urge you to please approve the, the height proposed. I don't see a difference. The only difference that I see is a positive difference on the tax revenue. If there is any comparison that I can make in the ten years that I've been operating Table Twenty-Six, and I drive by an empty lot from Joy Noodles to, to Magnolique Court. In ten years, there's been no tax revenue on that property other than just the, the regular revenue. So that alone, it would be something for me to consider on the positive. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Francisco Gill. I'm a principal of, uh, Sympatico Real Estate. And, um, we, um, we're a family that, we are a third generation in the area. I'm a resident also next to, to the, to the project in Southland Park. So it's not only, we have fifteen properties in, uh, in Dixie. We got, uh, many other businesses in the area and we have our real estate investments and, in, in the area too. Uh, we believe that this is, this is really a remarkable project, something that, uh, we, we've been waiting for many time, for a long time, for, uh, West Palm Beach to have something of this quality and this level. Uh, this is going to help, not only, like everybody has said, on the, on the taxes that, and the revenues that the city is going to be able to use for many of the things that we need to continue to grow, uh, but it's also, uh, I believe that it's a very smart way of growing, which is with tax revenue projects, tax revenue people, big tax revenue people that is going to be moving to the area. So not just from the business point, but also as a, as a resident in the area, uh, we support this project and, uh, we hope that, uh, even with all the waivers, uh, that you support it and you approve it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I'm Laurel Baker. I live in West Palm Beach on South Olive. I have lived here for forty-five years and seen any number of buildings go up. Spectacular architecture in some cases. And overall, this is the first project I've seen that's actually incorporated the neighborhood and has given consideration to the history of place in reintroducing promenades with the property and allowing people to be integrated into the project and walk around and think about the Norton. The traffic patterns will change because every city wants to be a walkable city. They are incorporating all of this and tax dollars aside, even though they're critically important, you need to have a city that people are engaged in. And I believe this project will go a long way in helping West Palm Beach to be that city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Denise Williams going to speak? If not, she submitted a letter in support of this, which will make part of the record, in support of the project and this height. Okay, at this podium, if we could have Verissa, is it Das, and Christina Worley? And on this other podium, Paula Mora and Guy Mora.
Hi, thank you so much for having us here today. Um, my name's Verissa. So I'm a local resident. I live- I live at the Strand, two-five-five Avurnia. It's a couple blocks away from this proposed site, and I support this project. I'm very excited about the potential benefits it brings to our community. I think we heard that there was some concern about the additional fifty feet, but we've also heard that this is a nominal increase in height, and the project design is so that we won't even, pedestrians like me won't even notice it. Additionally, I really like that there, the additional two million in revenue that this project potentially creates. Now, these funds can be used to support our police department, our firefighters, office equipment to increase public safety, and I don't think that we should undervalue this benefit. Another thing that's attractive to me is the placemaking of this project. I like that with increased walkability, there's increased safety. I like the improvements to the Norton Gallery Park and the increased connectivity between our museum and the waterfront and our cultural institutions. So I think that we've definitely heard how important this piece of real estate is, but we have one shot to get it right, and I hope that you will do that and vote in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the planning board. My name is Paula Mora, and I've been a resident for over thirty-five years of West Palm Beach. I'm speaking tonight in support of the proposal before you this evening. While I don't immediately live next to the project, I do understand the value of a project of this quality can have on the entire city. We heard tonight how Flagler Towers is going to generate millions of dollars each year that the city can use for services. These are dollars that will go into a general fund and used across the city. In addition, the difference between three hundred and three-hundred-and-fifty feet is nominal, but the difference between six million dollars and eight million dollars is substantial. This is a unique site with benefits that could impact our city for generations to come. Imagine what the city could do, knowing that they have eight million dollars coming into the city every year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Christina Worley. I am the adjacent property owner that did not give the letter. I own two-oh-one O'Cona Court. It's a business. I'm a small business owner. I've been in West Palm Beach where I founded my firm about twenty-five years ago. I want to thank the commission. You actually gave me a renovation grant when I renovated the old building and ripped it out and put a new one in. I think Josh Martin came and gave me an excellent presentation. It's a first-class architect, lovely team. They really are first-class. We have absolute gridlock in our area. What I'm worried about is what's going to happen on O'Cona Court now. I have people that wait ten minutes to come down my street. The city of West Palm Beach wouldn't collect our trash for two months. We had to pay for it to come. This is in front of us, and we are building backs on Assi Uton Way, which is the park. So lots of times, we come in our back way because our front way is totally blocked with what's going on. If the black way is going to be this way when it has, all these lovely pictures are with the dorms closed and nobody there. Like, three years ago, it was as packed in the front as it was in the back. Now, everybody's taken pictures and shown what it looks like with nobody there, but when the dormitory was full, it was gridlock in the back. So when you put all these people and all these residents, especially, you know, I'm fine with the extra fifty feet, but that's probably an extra couple hundred cars that are coming to help build it and everything else. But in general, it's a lot of cars, and what I want the city to look at is how we're going to fix the streets and the parking, because we need to have clients come to our firm, and we need the employees to be able to come in and out during the day. So they're not addressing that in what they presented to us, even though it's a beautiful building. I'd like the city to look at what it's going to do for us. We can't have our building business shut down while everybody's building. We have to look at what we can do to fix it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Let's see. Guy Mora, are you going to be addressing us? He says, I support the height of the Flagler Towers. How about at this podium, if we could have Liz Carson and Kev Ohm? And on this other lectern, Karen Steele and David Smith. Schmidt, whatever.
Hi, I'm Liz Carson. I'll be brief. I am a native West Palm Beecher.
I'm so sorry, ma'am. Did you give us your name? I didn't hear.
Liz Carson.
Thank you so much.
So I live in Northwood. I'm born and raised in West Palm Beach. I am in support of the towers. I'm in support of the height, and I hope you guys vote to approve the plans as presented tonight.
Thank you. Please come forward if you're ready to speak.
Hi there. My name is Karen Steele, and I am a thirty-five-year resident of the El Cid Neighborhood Association. And I'm sure we all remember each other from some other issues we've had recently. I appreciate the design and the work that went into the Flagler Towers. I think it fits nicely with the historic, it's a compliment to our historic neighborhood. However, I've sided with the city this time, and I think that there should be a limit to the height of the buildings. And with the commission, in fact, who wants to try to keep it to three hundred. As you mentioned, Mr. Mayans, you said you asked the question about intrinsic harm. The intrinsic harm that I see is we keep raising the bar. We keep raising the height of the buildings. We replaced, it started with the Bristol. We replaced the lovely one-story chapel on the lake with the Bristol. And then we got the Forte and Leclara, and now the Flagler Towers. We can keep going up. If you approve this three-hundred-and-fifty-six, the next one's going to ask for four hundred and four-fifty and five hundred. We have to have some height limit to this. If our zoning is not right, let's take a look at our zoning. Let's redo our zoning. But we just keep pushing the bar higher and higher, and I strongly believe that should be a consideration with this building. And the comment that you have to go into the middle of the intercoastal to appreciate the size of it, well, I walk down Flagler every single day, and since I heard about this project and they did a nice job of trying to present to our neighborhood, as I look and I think, oh, my God, this is going to be unbelievable when they put that big building up there. You see it as you walk down Flagler going north and you take a left, you know, to go down Diana Place. It's going to be noticeable. And I really, and while it's going to be noticeable at two hundred feet, I really think at some point, the city has to take a stand and stop increasing the height of the buildings there. And I also agree with the traffic concerns from the lady who spoke about Icana. It was pointed out, the traffic on Okeechobee. If anybody has gone down Flagler Drive at peak drive times, or Olive, or Dixie, we've already got serious issues, and I'm concerned about the more large residents that are putting up, that are going to continue with traffic problems, and we need that extra money to figure out how to address the speeding. I nearly got hit yesterday walking my dog across Flagler Drive. It's time to take consideration of those issues.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Please go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Kev Ohm. I'm a local musician and resident of Old Northwood off of Thirty-Fourth Street. I'm here to speak in favor of this project. It seems like every few months, I'm at City Hall speaking in favor of a project that's requesting a height waiver so that they can build higher density, and it's often at the disagreement of residents and city staff. And when I see that, it makes me think that our city staff and our humble, hard-working residents are blind to a really important thing right now. Our country is facing a national housing crisis, and specifically in South Florida, it's a national housing shortage. It could be considered a crisis level in South Florida. We simply cannot afford to say no to builders that want to build up. Our land is finite, and these are decisions that I believe we will regret gravely in the future if we continue to do so. Housing shortages are created in part by enough municipalities, cities, and residents saying no to high-density housing, saying no to buildings building up higher, and in part to developers that choose to build elsewhere in the cities that decide to not handcuff them in that ability. Our nation sought an exodus from cities in the fifties and sixties, and now cities are flourishing again. These precedents that staff and residents are defending are precedents that don't take into consideration this housing shortage and the future of our city. Let us build the city of tomorrow because we have that potential right now. The amount of capital that's coming into the city is something incredible and pretty much unseen since the beginning, since our founding. We have an opportunity here to create something great, but if we continue to defend precedents and prevent higher density and higher buildings due to the shadows that they create or the views that they obstruct, we are going to be in a severe issue in a few years because we're already in a housing shortage. Let them build up. We need it. My next generation needs it. We cannot afford to say no. I don't want to be here anymore and continue to advocate for this. I want the city to embrace this. I want the city to embrace the idea of an amazing skyline that is already starting to develop and that I view with envy every time I look at it, and I see the potential. But we won't get there if we continue to defend these ancient principles. We need to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. David Smith, Gregory Place. I've been here a long time, and I like this city. I like what I saw tonight because thirty-some years ago, neighborhoods didn't participate in this process. Thirty years ago, we didn't, they told us, no outdoor dining on Clemada Street. And tonight, we're talking about fifty feet. I'm supportive of this because we've come such a long way from where we were. But looking at the design of the building, remember, the creativity is intelligence having fun. This is fun. This is creative. Please approve it. Thank you. Thank you, sir. And we're going to have at this lectern Derek Simpson and Carol Hogan, and on this other lectern, Susan Rothman and, let's see, Randy Beth, I'm so sorry, I can't make out their last name. Randy Beth, you live at sixty-two North Flagler. You know who I mean. All right. Please come forward. You're here, ma'am. Go ahead and proceed.
Is it my turn?
It is, ma'am.
Sorry. I'm Susan Rothman. I live at twelve-hundred South Flagler, the trianon, which is next to the Bristol. I truly am a neighbor. I think the project will not only bring value to the neighborhood, but also to West Palm Beach, and I won't be redundant. I think it's all been well explained. I just ask you to vote yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Derek Simpson. I'm a resident of the south end. I'm also one of the pastors at Family Church, located just a couple of blocks north of the proposed project. I'm here this evening to speak in support of the project in both my capacity as a resident and as a pastor at Family Church. We at Family Church, we feel strongly in support of the redevelopment of the site. I want to commend the Flagler Towers team, in the Frisbee Group in particular, for their outreach to us and their inclusion of us in the redevelopment of the project. We favor the Flagler Towers site plan, as you've heard tonight, because it will transform older buildings into a beautifully planned pedestrian-focused, twenty-first-century iconic project. Additionally, the redevelopment will improve the pedestrian experience within our neighborhood by way of the neighborhood cafe, the Diana Place Walkability, the Flagler Drive Botanical Garden and Fountain. We believe the project will positively impact the daily lives and community of our neighbors and residents. Finally, we think the approval of the Flagler Towers site project will dramatically improve the pedestrian experience and help us provide needed services to our neighbors, contributing to a brighter future for all West Palm Beach residents. We encourage you to vote yes in support of the project.
Thank you, sir. Is Carol Hogan wish to be here? Please come forward. And Randy Beth, I'm going to be sixty-two North Flagler Drive. If you wish to be heard, please come forward. Oh, she does have a note here on the board. Dear board, approval of Flagler Towers will something valuation to our real estate, something taxpayers. She needs a lesson in writing, our merchant houses, industries, schools, as well as improve the current site. So she's in support of it. Broden Hallwell, do you wish to be heard? I'm sorry? No? Okay. Anthony Maroli?
I'm so sorry.
He left? Okay, okay, okay. Jim Jenkins, Deborah Schwinn, please come forward. Grislane, is it? Dehan Yuris?
This should be me.
Okay, your writing's good. It's my pronunciation that's so bad. And Patrick Conig, if you'd all come forward and take one of the two lecterns, please come forward, sir. Please.
Mr. Chairman and planning board, my name is Jim Jenkins. I'm a resident of South Florida, South Flagler Drive, and I'm also a thirty-five-year member and member of the session at Memorial Presbyterian Church. And I come today on behalf of Memorial Presbyterian Church, which is the immediate neighbor, literally, to the west of this project. Memorial has a long history of serving West Palm Beach, actually ninety-seven years, not one-hundred-and-twenty-four maybe, but a long time. We've seen many changes over the years, and our church has continually adapted while consistently bringing a message of love, hope, and community. We support the redevelopment of the area and particularly the Flagler Towers project, knowing that our mission of social engagement and community building with spiritual emphasis will be enhanced. Leadership of Memorial has met with the developers and are comfortable that Flagler Towers development plans will be beneficial to the neighborhood. We believe the overall height as planned creates an aesthetic symmetry to the West Palm Beach skyline and therefore should be approved. We like the classic architecture. We think it plays, it really pays a great tribute to the past, but foreshadows a future. It's not what you see in some of the other buildings, and candidly, for a ninety-four-year-old church, we really like it. And finally, we support the developers' emphasis on walkability. Many of our members walk right to pass this site to our church. We think the cafe is great, and we ask you to support the project at its full height as requested.
Thank you, sir. Please, sir, come forward. And ma'am, you'll be next. Come forward.
Good evening. I'm Gilan Dumier, the director of the Norton Museum of Art, and I'm here speaking on my behalf and also the board of trustee of the Norton, which you saw later, a little bit earlier. So I need my glasses again. But we are definitely in support of the project. We've been very collaborative with the Frisbee family and the team. They've been in touch with us absolutely, and we are, as you know, the immediate, one of the immediate neighbors. Very attractive, also, with the walkability of the project and the whole landscape design. As you could see, it's really important for us because many of the visitor are coming to the museum and then walking around and so on. And that project is really beautiful. I mean, the design of Stern, of course, is one of the amazing, you know, worldwide architects, and we work with London and Foster. So these, again, two great examples of architecture in this city, so close to each other, it's really amazing. The height, I mean, of course, there's maybe a shade somewhere, a shadow, but, you know, it doesn't really make a difference there. The beautiful building is there, and the public will not really notice that at that level. So for us, it's not an issue at all. So we are fully in support, very excited about also the trees and the landscape, and we may work in the future again together with them and with the city. But it's very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, good evening, members of the planning board. My name's Deborah Schwinn, and I am speaking on behalf of Palm Beach Atlantic University as its president. I'm here to show strong support for the proposed Flagler Towers project located on South Flagler Drive. Palm Beach Atlantic University is very proud to have found a partner in the Frisbee Group when we were looking to sell our dormitories on South Flagler. We have worked side-by-side with the Frisbee design team on a product that we at Palm Beach Atlantic University could be proud of. The amount of outreach conducted by The amount of outreach conducted by the Frisbee Group to share their vision with this community has been incredible. In fact, we expect the Flagler Towers will jumpstart the university's own master plan, allowing us to grow and better serve our students and our community. We support the height request of this project. We believe that the millions that this project will generate for West Palm Beach annually will have long-term benefits for our city. We appreciate the architectural design and attention to detail and focus on the pedestrian experience. We envision a world where our university students can visit the cafe on site and engage with the community. We also envision a world where residents are utilizing the public space on this site to walk between the waterfront and the Norton Museum and along South Dixie. So the value of this project actually goes way beyond revenues generated for the city. It's really more about connecting our communities together. And that is inherently the mission of our university. The approval of the Flagler Towers project will facilitate the revitalization of this site, will provide our university with the funding we need to meet educational goals and will be an asset for the city for generations to come. Please vote yes to support this item brought before you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, members of the Planning Board. Thank you for your service tonight. I think I'm the last speaker, so.
One hopes.
Yes. My name is Patrick Koenig. And I'm speaking as a property owner of property on Flagler Drive, as well as a longtime trustee of Palm Beach Atlantic University. And of course, in support of the proposed Flagler Towers project. Palm Beach Atlantic University has owned this potentially valuable waterfront property for many years. When the university's new state-of-the-art residential student housing complex was completed last year, the Flagler Towers property was no longer needed for student housing. I'm a little disheartened to hear Mr. Verdone oppose this project as Palm Beach Atlantic believes in the Forte project still to this day. The Two Roads Development Team had twelve months, as they were the adjoining neighbor, to make this part of their project. They chose not to. Palm Beach Atlantic had not marketed this real estate. We had many developers who wanted to purchase the Flagler Towers site from the university. The university spent a great deal of time evaluating potential purchasers and selected the Frisbee Heinz team. I happen to chair the Real Estate Committee at Palm Beach Atlantic University. The Frisbee Heinz team was selected because they're best-in-class developers with an extraordinary track record, who are willing to make the tremendous financial and time investment into hiring the very best design team in the nation and who thoughtfully engaged with all of the surrounding neighbors to ensure long-term compatibility with the neighbors' current and future plans. The development of this property and how it is developed is of paramount importance to the university and our future. We will be their neighbors forever. Our Board of Trustees very intentionally selected the Frisbee Heinz team because of the special and innovative design before you this evening. Our Board of Trustees unanimously supports the proposal, including the three-hundred-and-fifty-six-foot height. This project is not just compatible, but additive in so many ways. Connectivity, walkability, architecturally pleasing and collaborative with the entire cultural quadrant. Palm Beach Atlantic believes strongly in the importance of cultural, educational and theological institutions and supporting the health and well-being of all of the citizens. We've met with the team putting this project together and appreciate the outreach and engagements, as well as input they had with us each step of the way. We believe the overall height of the planned towers will fit in well with other buildings either already built or currently under construction on South Flagler Drive. The approval of the Flagler Towers will greatly contribute to a brighter future, not only for West Palm Beach, but for Palm Beach residents as they stroll along the beautiful Flagler Drive, the students of PBAU, and as have you heard tonight, the visitors of the Norton Museum. Please support this project for all those involved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard who has not been heard this evening?
No, no more.
All right. Yes, sir. Do you, have you filled out a card? Well, you can fill out it first. Come forward. You have three minutes.
My name is Jim Watson. I live in the Mango Promenade District. I've lived there since nineteen ninety-five. I think this is a beautiful project and the Frisbee Group was very courteous and educated us about it. I think there should be a shadow study. One was required for Leclara. This project should have one too. I think the building is too tall and I support staff. And I think traffic is becoming a problem and I hope the city deals with that. Thank you.
Thank you. If you don't mind, sir, if you could complete a card for our record. Anyone else who wishes to be heard who has not been heard?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. We have nine people that called in that left voicemails that I have to play for you.
Okay, great. And then Hope, we're also going to, real quickly, we had how many letters? Maybe we should deal with the letters first. Uh-oh, that's a gentleman. Okay. Ms. White, we have received a number of letters. Do you have just a brief accounting of where they are, from whom, et cetera?
Mr. Chair, in the interest of time, the correspondence staff received would not be read.
Oh, thank you.
However, it will be entered into the record. I do want to read the names. The public comment forms of support from Deborah Markot, Fultonie Thompson, Nick Leon, Casper, Saldiga, Benjamin Leon, Russell Bourne from Jupiter Inlet Colony, Griffin Leon, Rebecca Rayner Jupiter, Tom Soroco, Elliot Berman, Charles Muyo, Nancy Born Jupiter. We received letters of support from John Mike, Fred Tan, Ron Warnakey, Nicholas and Gail Coniglio, Jonathan Gladstone, Vincent Burkhardt, Will Correnti, James Dieter, Great Golf. Fifty-eight letters of support received from Robert Frisbee, Donald Burgess, Chamber of Commerce, James Farrell, Memorial Presbyterian Church, Patrick Conick, Flagler Realty and Development, Robert Hammond, Norton Park Place Condominium Association, Inc., signed by four board members, Roger Jansen, Barbie Zambrano, Nick Rojo, Rachel Burke, C. Bruce Berry, Flora Sinque, Lillian Chironamos, Hes Musalet, William and Kathleen Benjamin, Mara Ziska, Kate Arissa, Brandon Solomon, Ben Wendorf, Ryan Burke, Charlotte Munder, Lauren Lee Munder, Tucker Keno, Meredith and Michael Katzenberg, Greg Batten, Michael Kuva, Dr. Jay Nisper, Gordon Pollak, Christine Tabernilla, Sophia Tabanilla, Van Spina, Ned Grace, Will Ryan, Linda Ashley. Additional letters of support via Flagler Towers, Heinz Frisbee Group, from Dr. Deborah Schwinn, Palm Beach Atlantic, Bruce Gentleman, Norton Museum of Art, Jimmy Scroggins Family Church, Frances Fitcher, Ann Norton Sculpture Gardens, Gopo, Ray Jingauda, Related Companies, Laura Baker, Eddie Schmidt and Ozzy Madeiros, David Walker, Palm Beach Opera, Susan Rothman, Renee Lehman, Center for Child Counseling, Elliot Berman, David Eckerd, Joey Colombo, Alex Milan, Amato Milan Development, Mercer Park, Elizabeth Carson. And that is it. We also received nine voicemails.
Okay, and why don't we handle those nine voicemails now?
Hope, Hope, did you bring the people's names with the voicemail? All the voicemails were in support. It might be quicker just to read the names if Hope has the list of people that.
If you have the names, that should be sufficient. I think we've gotten a flavor.
Voicemails received from Jerry Whitehead. Ashley, no last name. Jasmine, no last name. Alex. Barbara. Shane. Catherine Cricky. That's what we heard. Rachel. And Greg Burke.
Thank you, ma'am. All right.
You're better than Steve.
Yeah, that's right. Mr. White, keep it very brief, if you can.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, Board members, I'd like to take an opportunity to address several things that were brought up first by Eric Schneider with the staff. He is correct. We did aggregate three of those encroachments into one because they're all the same story, but I'll acknowledge that those were three trying to economize time. And I also acknowledge that we had an additional waiver for maneuvering. If you recall, I got to some blank slides that would not move forward. Unfortunately, that was in there. I'm happy to go back and do it, but the essence of it is, is you need a waiver to maneuver a vehicle out of the loading zone instead of driving in and driving out of a different part of the property. And we can make a hole somewhere in the project and create another access point to drive those loading vehicles out, but it defeats the entire purpose of the design. This is the same waiver that was granted to the Forte. It's a common waiver to grant. Staff is in favor of it. Staff's traffic engineer is in favor of it. So unless you'd like me to go back and go through it, and I apologize for some reason, that was one of the blank slides. I also need us to, I need you to make findings of fact in the record on the RPD, if it is something that you were inclined to grant, that it meets the standards, which Eric Schneider correctly pointed out. I do disagree with Eric Schneider on the following, and that is that we do not meet the standards for rezoning. So I will recite to you the two things that he stated we don't meet, that we are, quote, inconsistent with surrounding land uses. We're a residential RPD, NAC of RPDs. Everything on both sides of us is an RPD. So the standard for the rezoning is, are we consistent with the surrounding land uses? Not land heights, land uses. We're not proposing a uranium mine next to an RPD. We are proposing an RPD next to an RPD. So we are clearly consistent with that. The second standard that he quoted that we do not meet, quote, "It would not result in an orderly and logical development pattern." This speaks to the exact same issue. We are proposing an RPD in a line of RPDs on South Flagler Drive. This code standard does not speak to height. It speaks to a logical and orderly development pattern. And we clearly meet that as well. So I don't think there's been any evidence, other than hearsay introduced into the record, on which you can make a finding that we do not meet the eight standards for rezoning. We do. I'll also point out that there were, by my count, thirty-seven speakers tonight. Thirty-four were in support of the project. And I think the three that were opposed said, love the design, concerns about height, concerns about traffic. This is about the most overwhelming level of support I've ever seen for a project of this magnitude in any city that I've ever had the pleasure of working on a project in twenty-three years of doing this. And I think you would find the same. I would like to ask, should he like to address it, ask Rob Frisbee to come up and address some of the assertions made by our neighbor Forte? Before I do that, I have one final thought, and that is the point that my friend Mamie Kistner brought up about minority hiring and training. We are absolutely committing on record to meet or exceed the minority hiring and training standard of any other project approved in the city in recent years. So Mamie, we are fully committed to that, as you know. Rob, do you feel a need or do you feel a need to hear any of that?
If it keeps it brief.
Sure, I'll do it very briefly.
Vote against it. Go ahead.
Yes, hi. Okay, so I know that Two Roads and Forte representation, they had three main complaints about minimized view sheds and shading, as well as a lack of cooperation between our two entities. And so I think I want to start in reverse and talk about the lack of cooperation. As you can see tonight, we've tried, we've gone to great lengths to cooperate with all of our neighbors, including the Two Roads team. Over the last five months, we've met with them numerous times. And going all the way back to the beginning of this project, we actually asked if we could use their same land planner, Joe Verdon, because of the synergies that we thought that would create in designing our project. They decided that they wanted to conflict out Joe and not let him work on our team. And then going forward, when we gave them presentations and had meetings, we invited our architectural team, but they did not invite their architectural team. To this date, we've never received any feedback from their architects. In fact, we don't know if their architects have actually reviewed our plans. So, and then this past week, for the first time, we heard from Tara Dewey asking if we would meet with them again and delay our project when, for the past, again, five months and before that, we've done nothing but continuous outreach. And we've gone to great lengths to show them and share with them that we really care. We really want their project to be incredibly successful. And we want our project to impact their values. And we feel so strongly about that, that we've invited our friends to purchase in their building, which has happened. And one of our senior members of our investment team has actually purchased a building, a residence in their building. Additionally, we've offered to purchase residences on the south side of their building where they claim are the most affected because we believe that it's a good investment, that by the time that is built, there will be appreciation and value. Speaking to the lack, the minimization of view shed and shading, one of the things that we wanted to point out is that a lot of the hardship that Forte is discussing is a self-inflicted hardship. Their lot is not a true waterfront lot, but it's actually a flagged lot. There is a blocking site due east of them. And as you can see on their site plan, that is what's precluded them from moving any further east. And it's why they're set back to the west significantly further than code. And even though we have pulled back our eastern tower significantly further than the twenty-five-foot code requirement and even the seventy-foot staff request, we are still slightly in front of their tower. But we've worked so hard to minimize that, those view reductions. And we put together a view study that we shared with them. And in that study, we showed that we have actually impacted, based on our design, more, a greater percentage of our views than of their views. And additionally, in terms of a shadow study, we all know that the sun rises in the east and sets in the west and it goes on a southern arc. And so anything to the north, especially in the winter months, is going to have some shadow effects. But whether our tower is east or west, it doesn't change the fact that they're going to be shadowed. It just changes the time of day that that shadowing occurs. And we've tried again really hard to take fifty percent of our entire massing and move it away from their building to minimize those effects. The shadowing, if we just went by code dictates and built to our minimum setback and build a single monolithic structure that's shorter in height, we would much greatly affect their views and shadowing their property than we do today. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, at this juncture, I'd like to bring it back to the board for a brief discussion. And let me start on this end with you, Henry. What are your thoughts?
Well, I'll be, I'll be very brief.
We appreciate that.
I think I'm inclined to support the project and support the project with, at the height requested by the applicant. I think it's rare that you have a project that is supported by effectively almost all of the neighbors in the community and that also has these impacts on the street level and kind of even the skyline of West Palm. So I support it and support finding of fact, as Harvey said, as well.
Okay.
I'm going to keep it brief as well and pretty much mirror what you said. I support it. I think that they've done an excellent job. And I think that it does speak volumes to how many people have supported this project. I think the height issues maybe need to be visited. Because this is the last property in that area, we don't really necessarily have that concern with continuing going higher and higher. But if, you know, commission wants to look at that later down the road, by all means, please do. But for our purposes, I think they've done an excellent job and I'm supporting it.
Peter.
I have no issues with the height. I really appreciate the massing studies that were provided. I think it proves to the northerly neighbor that in fact, the option, the final option selected provides the least amount of shading on the property. I think two slender towers are of much benefit to the neighbors and to the city. And I appreciate the color palette that was selected. I have no other issues. I would just fully support the project.
Thank you. John.
Sure. So you need four votes to pass, right?
Let's see. Let me do the counting. Yes.
Four of the five? All right. Well, first of all, I'm going to come out and say that I do support the staff. I...
We need three votes, I think, just to...
Okay. I support the staff, but in this, what has become a beauty pageant or a popularity contest tonight, I'm going to support the project because of its overwhelming support. I think there's no doubt in my mind, and there's no doubt in anybody's mind in this room, that it's just a brilliant project on every single level. The concern I have is about the way, I mean, on the year that I've been on this planning board, every month we're being asked to, like, a million waivers and increase the height, and I really don't know what the vision is anymore. I don't know what the plan is for the city. I don't know where the community-wide input is. That's what happens in a planning process, and that's why we have some rules in place. So when you do open the door to a precedent, it allows for others to come in and ask for the same thing, maybe not to the south, but maybe to the west, maybe to the north, maybe in another part of the downtown. Setback and height are directly related to the foundations of planning and zoning for light and air, and if we're not going to respect those, then I don't really understand why we have rules. I think that the staff position and their findings of fact are sound, and I would be inclined to support it, and I want to know that they did a brilliant job, and I wholeheartedly support that. So it's a difficult place for me to stand, because I just think that, I mean, it is a brilliant project. I don't want to take anything away from anybody or all the people who support this, but I think these actions are dangerous. I think they set a precedent. I wonder why we even have these rules or these setbacks. I don't know what the vision is. I don't know what kind of plan we're following. And as a planning board member, that concerns me, because basically, we're like just building this city one meeting at a time on a whim without a guide to lead us to where we're going. And that's the concern I have as a board member. But I will support the application, but I'm not happy with my vote, because from a principal standpoint, from a planning standpoint, that comes from a community vision, and that's not just the people in this room, but that's all of West Palm Beach as a whole. What do we want to be? And when we start deviating from that and we deviate from the rules, then we're really not following that vision, and I don't really know what the vision is. So that's just my opinion on it, but I will support.
I appreciate it. For myself, first of all, I certainly agree with John's comments. I do see the city emerging differently than what we've been, and I personally think this is a better direction for us. But I agree with you, and it needs to be agreed to and planned and everything else. I have enormous sympathy for the staff and trying to respect the 300-foot, because every decision they've gotten from the city commission has been consistent with that. This applicant, though, is challenging that. They're saying, "We need to rethink that, particularly here," and they should be given that chance. And then the question comes back to us. We're just a recommending board. Would we recommend 350 under these circumstances? I think the consensus is, albeit with different levels of enthusiasm, is yes, we'd recommend that to the city, and I would join that as well. So I would also support that we recommend approval, and that'd be at the higher limit. So I believe, I'm looking for a motion. I think our legal counsel gave us some guidance as to how this thing may proceed, and Mr. Pifko's been the recipient of that, and I'll ask him for the first motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move approval of case number 1857B, and it will be in the form of, one, two, three, four, five motions. The first motion will deal with the five conditions, the 18 regulations to be complied with, and waiver number one, which grants the redevelopment reduced to 3.4 acres from the 10-acre minimum requirement.
Okay, we have a motion. Have we a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously.
Second motion deals with waivers two through seven. I move approval.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Third motion deals with the building height, which is waiver number eight, and I move approval for the proposed height of 356 feet.
I'll second this one.
Okay, motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
And the last one, I move approval of waivers nine through 12.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. We will now move on to our next case. And that is Code Revision Case Number 1899.
Did you do a motion to approve the case itself?
Yeah, I did, the first one. Yeah, 1857.
That was painful. That was painful.
I was going to mention, I said, this probably would be a record. These numbers in opposition, never.
I know. It really is unusual. That's really the homework. No more cards. We're not accepting. I know, but we're not accepting. But the larger question is, though, I mean, I agree with what the young man said there. I mean, I do think we need to go higher. I do think this is an unique opportunity. And, you know, if you take those places that they have, I don't know how many units, this is out of town, you made them like palatial home, individual home estates, how much raw land would you be taking? I think perfectly we need to be going more higher density.
I just don't want for people to get what they want just because it's a beauty pageant.
The city never envisioned this, right?
That's not the way land rights need to be.
You've got to change what the law... The other option is to let it be. And the applicant, which will be a company, which will be a quality, it's only a board is difficult. They can't grab waivers. Everything has to be, you know, a change in the sentence, and a change in them. They can't grab waivers. We can't.
Yeah, probably should have listened to you.
Have some restrictions on how long people speak, because that was outrageous.
It's a great question. What I've been told by counsel, because we go through all this stuff and everything else, too, is right now, we don't have present limits on what applicant can do or what the staff can do. Actually, it's, I don't even think we need somebody that's strong. I mean, I think we could do it with a reward, or even...
If Albert had to wait years. Yeah, it would just go away. It doesn't warrant it. That's a dilemma. You've got to respond to the quantity of mass of the city. City carries away. There is no zoning for that. How are you going to plan that in a master plan? You can't.
It's something I could get at home. I know he's working to develop some of his practices.
Mr. Mayans? Mr. Mayans?
Sorry. We're taking a break.
Yes, I think you deserve it.
Just one moment, please.
No?
So he's talking. Let's continue.
All right, we're calling to order that case number, Code Revision Case 1899. I understand Ms. Aponte has a very abbreviated presentation. All right, guys.
Sorry. Okay, señora.
Good evening.
She wanted her full five minutes, and we should give it to her. That's what I've said. Go ahead.
Anna Maria Ponte Sierra van designer. Thank you for your attention after this long night. We are here for a city initiative request for a tax amendment to the downtown master plan element of the comprehensive plan modifying policy 1.1.1, policy 2.3.2, and policy 3.1.3 to promote the rate of development of the area between Quadro Boulevard, Dixie Highway, Pamichalex Boulevard, and the FEC right-of-way, creating the new North Railroad Avenue District, modifying the existing Bressford Park District, deleting the existing industrial chic district, designated additional incentive areas which allow additional height and development capacity within the new North Railroad Avenue District, and designated two properties as urban open space. I'm going to start my presentation apologizing to the board, because your packet did not include the attachment to that was referenced. So I just put a copy on your desk. The presentation will include the explanation of that report, so I hope you can get that for us, but I totally apologize. I don't know how that happened. Having said that, I'm going to start my presentation saying, in general, the downtown development has seen a boom in the last 15 years. In average, downtown has seen 211 residential units built every year for the last 15 years, and an average of 55,000 square feet of development, non-residential development, every year. In general, that development has occurred south of Quadro Boulevard, basically between Okeechobee and Quadro, in what we know as the core of the downtown. Limited investment has occurred in the residential districts north of Quadro Boulevard. That's what we know as Bressford Park, Industrial Chic, and the Providencia Park area. Only two projects have been recently built, the Lofting Place, a residential building, and the HSS facility that was open, that opened last year. Apart from that, the Bressford Park area and Industrial Chic district have just seen small renovations of residential fabric and some renovations on the existing commercial buildings along Dixie Highway. The Bressford Park district and Industrial Chic development were envisioned in 2009, when we did the downtown master plan update, as transitional district, especially the Industrial Chic area, that is, all the properties next to the FEC tracks. The intention was in light industrial uses could coexist with new residential uses and commercial uses. The goal was to include adapted and renovated building stock and large working storefronts with warehouse-style buildings that were target for designer-related uses. However, the vision has not materialized. Time has gone by, and the structures that exist along Railroad Avenue are still vacant or utilized as a storage or industrial uses. So the neighborhood that we're talking about west of Dixie Highway between Pamichalex and Quadro and the FEC remains basically dormant, despite all the development that has occurred in the downtown in the last decade. Large percentage of vacant parcels still exists within the neighborhood. 38.6% of the neighborhood is vacant. This map on the screen will show, it's highlighted in yellow, all the parcels that are vacant in the neighborhood. The industrial uses still occupy the warehouses next to the FEC, despite all the provisions that the zoning regulation put in place to try to incentivize the renovation of these structures and its transformation as more compatible uses with the residential neighborhood that is next to it. For the last several years, the city has recognized the need to promote the redevelopment of this area and modify the zoning regulations to attract new investment. And in last year or in 2019, we were approached, the city was approached by NDT Development and Place Projects with the idea to do a redevelopment project in this area. So it was very interesting to see how their approach and their idea to renovate this area really matched the vision that the city had. The city started to collaborate with them, crafting the details of how a proposed redevelopment could happen in this area. CRA has been involved and has been working with the city on that, and we are basically in front of you to present the proposed code amendments that will achieve this vision. In general, the proposal meets the DMP goals, the downtown master plan goals. It's a compact urban development that preserves the character of the district, and it has a mixed use and a pedestrian-friendly environment. We believe this area has a great potential, and what you're going to see today, we're very excited about it. It's a great opportunity for the city and something that has a long time to come, and we want to really take further. I'm just going to, at this point, transfer, I'll put the presentation to Joe first. He's going to explain what Plusservia and their group had been working with us on proposing the vision for this area and how the redevelopment could occur. And then I will come back to the podium to explain in detail the code amendments for the comprehensive plan that we'll have to take through the process.
Good evening, planning board members. My name is Joe First. Address 1105 North Dixie Highway. Founder, managing principal of Place Projects. I will make this as brief as possible, given clearly the time that was spent earlier this evening. And before I get into the presentation, I was listening to all the commentary this evening, and there was a lot of support thinking about how to increase tax base, how to increase residential housing. But what people didn't talk about is the ability to have housing that has affordability to it and that is actually built for all the droves of people that are moving to this market. What Nora is, is the opportunity to do that in a cohesive, thoughtful, programmatic manner while creating what I believe will be one of the most vibrant main streets in Florida with North Railroad Avenue, with the high-character buildings that we have, the streetscape improvements that we're going to make, and the generally cohesive environment that we'll be able to curate with the way that we've acquired this neighborhood and will continue to do work in this neighborhood. So I'll take you through some of those details in the presentation. The way that this came to be for me is my partner, Ned Grace, from NDT Development, saw this area and the underutilized warehouse buildings, started to acquire property here in 2019. These guys, NDT, are very focused locally in this market. They have great hospitality concepts, as well as real estate projects that add vibrancy and character to downtown West Palm Beach. My background is, I was the managing partner with a company called Goldman Properties in the redevelopment of Wynwood. The reason why I'm bringing Wynwood up, this is not analogous in any way, shape, or form to my work in Wynwood, but it's about the economic impact and the public-private relationships that were created to enhance the city of Miami and make Wynwood the second most visited destination in all of Miami County from a place of having virtually zero and nothing happening within that market. Today, there's over 5 million annual visitors that come to Wynwood. There are about 1.6 million pay-by-phone transactions in a neighborhood that didn't even have street parking, let alone six years ago. There's been about $552 million of spending from visitors. We, myself, as the creator and chairman of the Business Improvement District, along with Plusservia, who's the urban planner that's working on this project alongside the city of West Palm Beach and ourselves, we won the 2016 American Planning Association Award for Best Zoning Policy for Economic Development. There's been over $1 billion of ground-up construction, and I think most importantly, there were less than about 200 jobs in all of Wynwood. It was primarily a vacant warehouse district, and there's been over 7,500 local jobs created. That's before any of the ground-up development that is taking place now. And right now, there's about 800,000 square feet of new Class A office space that's being developed in that market. So this project has three core principles and parts. It's how do we create the most vibrant, compelling main street that's not just a destination for downtown West Palm Beach, but also a regional destination for Palm Beach County and Florida generally? We need to do a series of infrastructure improvements along North Railroad Avenue. There's insufficient infrastructure for the contemplated uses. And then, of course, what we're here to talk about tonight, which is the master plan, which is how do we take primarily vacant parcels north of 10th Street and south of Palm Beach Lakes Bridge and create the much-needed housing supply that's necessary for this growing market? Here's an aerial view that I want to take one moment to focus on. Clearly, where you're looking, the bridge is the Palm Beach Lakes Bridge. We have Dixie to the east, the FEC to the west, and Quadro to the south. Those are the effective boundaries of the neighborhood. When you look at this map, you see a lot of vacant parcels. North of 10th Street, south of Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard, and west of Madeira, all the way to the FEC, there are 51 individual parcels. We own or control 50 of those. Of those parcels, 37 are vacant. There are seven with dilapidated structures, and there are only two owner-occupied homes within that entire sub-district. And again, we control 50. And again, we control 50 of the 51 parcels. As it relates to North Railroad Avenue, this picture clearly delineates the opportunity that we have. We own all of these 11 contiguous warehouse buildings. There's 117,000 square feet of primarily vacant space. What we have here is an opportunity unlike any other that I've seen doing this type of work throughout the state and studying it nationally. We have a cohesive environment that has an opportunity for an amazing public realm, for an open park space, and for parking uses, which you'll see further in the presentation. Here are the existing conditions. Again, you can see overhead power lines, storage lots, makeshift parking lots, and again, vacancy, a street that has very little activity on it. In terms of our thesis for what this is, Rosemary Square is a great project. There's nothing to say negative about that project at all. Clematis has a great, rich history. But clearly, today, it doesn't have a co-tenancy that allows it to keep a certain type of vibe and a certain type of presence that creates a pedestrian-friendly environment from morning to night. Given the fact that we have full control of all these buildings, as well as the parcels on the east side of the road, we have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to create a magical space where you can come to this space and come to the, and experience the public realm, and do that free of charge. In terms of the infrastructure and public realm improvements that I just mentioned, there's a six-inch water line that runs down all of North Railroad Avenue. We're upgrading that to a 12-inch water line. There's, we're reconstructing the entire sewer system to tie in and drain through 9th Street. We're upgrading all the electrical service and undergrounding that electrical service under North Railroad Avenue. We're increasing the stormwater retention abilities. In terms of accessibility, right now, there's a four-foot, non-ADA compliant sidewalk that's fronting these buildings. We are creating a curbless street, not too dissimilar from what you see on Clematis, a 14-foot sidewalk on the west side of the road, and then a linear park that you see denoted in the rendering on the left side, on the east side of North Railroad Avenue with parking in the back. We recently went in front of the CRA board with a TIF agreement for the reimbursement of these costs. We did that yesterday. We received unanimous approval. So in this example, we are fronting all of these costs. It's a 17 and a half million dollar streetscape and infrastructure project. We are capitalizing that as part of our development, and then receiving a TIF rebate, assuming that the development agreement gets successfully entered into between us and the CRA. Here's another rendering view, and this is what I'm describing. One of the things that, that I did take a lot of pride in Wynwood is creating a human experience that was accessible to all. You didn't have to come into a store to buy a coffee, or have a drink, or have a meal, to have an experience. And with what we've conceived of the streetscape, as you can see in this rendering, we're basically building a privately-owned public park along North Railroad Avenue to create this two-sided street condition that makes this have the ability to have a vibrancy and pedestrian focus that's unlike anything else that we think exists within downtown West Palm Beach. Here's another rendering taken from 7th Street facing north, just to show a little bit more of the perspective of the linear park, and really the, the public realm opportunity that exists. From a planning and zoning perspective, nothing's perfect. I'll be the first one to say it. There is no project that addresses everybody's needs perfectly. What we've done here is taken the most sensitive, thoughtful approach, the preservation of character and scale between, in the primary residential streets, between 8th Street and 10th Street, while allowing for that increased capacity to the north. One point that I think is very important to make, the FAR, and I'm gonna get a little technical here, but the FAR that exists between 10th Street and Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard is a one-times FAR. That is what we own, and that is what we have. The proposed FARs for this area are between 3.75 and 5.5 times. And what that means is that we have the capacity to build about 1.7 million square feet, which means we have a shortfall of 1 million, 1.2 million square feet of development capacity. The reason why that is so relevant is all of that has to come through the incentive program that you've worked on and the City Commission passed. And the reason why that's so relevant here is that 20% of that transferred FAR, whether we're transferring it internally within the neighborhood or from external sites, has to participate in the affordability program. So it's, it's beautiful that people came here and supported a project that's built, you know, on Flagler for very expensive housing. What we have is the alternative to that. We have the project that this city needs to provide affordability in mixed-income housing within a market that clearly has an affordability crisis. And with the type of growth that this city is experiencing, this city needs this neighborhood to, to fill that gap and provide that supply. These are the existing conditions north of 10th Street. So under the bridge here, this is the Palm Beach Lakes Bridge. This is a great example of slum and blight. I think that some of the residents here will speak to some of the issues that have occurred under the bridge. There's also a series of vacant structures. I, I do want to be sensitive to the fact that there is one owner-occupied dwelling unit north of 10th Street, south of Palm Beach Lakes, and west of Madeira. But other than that, again, it's primarily vacant parcels and vacant, vacant structures. The whole thesis of this zoning plan and framework is, again, the preservation of the, of the residential core between 8th and 10th Street, and then gradual transitional zoning as you approach Palm Beach Lakes Bridge. So basically, the only zoning changes that are being contemplated for the areas, the general area here north of 10th Street, is, is north of 10th Street, where we have a three-story requirement on the north side of 10th Street with a step back to then get to the eighth story. And then north of 11th Street, we get to a 15-story scale, again, with a step back above the eighth floor, so that we're matching the street sections. One of the primary concerns of the city of West Palm Beach and our planner was trying to create a transitional area on 10th Street where the residential uses can then start to scale up as we get closer to the Palm Beach Lakes Bridge. The tallest building that we have here is a 20-story building in the northwestern corner of the neighborhood, fronting Palm Beach Lakes Bridge at its absolute maximum height, which is about 50 feet. So the only reason why that building is getting additional height is to, of course, get above the Palm Beach Lakes Bridge. Here's a hand-sketch rendering that shows what we're talking about. I can tell you from experience that what we've conceived here is as thoughtful of a plan as I've ever candidly worked on myself or studied anywhere in the country. And the reason why that is, is this is a neighborhood that is gonna have a multitude of diversity of housing options and commercial options. This is not a situation where an entire neighborhood is getting razed over to build new within. The residential core that you see highlighted in, in the white, all of that is not getting any zoning changes that allow any additional intensity within that section, with the exception of the properties along North Railroad Avenue. When you look to the north, all of the increase in intensity and scale happens in that primarily vacant area, again, fronting the Palm Beach Lakes Bridge. We have four goals. It's to revitalize an underutilized part of downtown. It's to create a new, new commercial offerings and enhance public space. It's to convert industrial relics into contemporary community assets. And it's to provide diverse housing to support the growth of downtown West Palm Beach. The other piece I just wanted to add, this map here, there are 150 folios within this district that we're describing as North Railroad Avenue District, Nora. Every parcel that's in green, we have a signed letter of support from, and that's 130 of the 150 parcels. The ones that are not highlighted are not per se people that don't support us at all. They're absentee owners and people that couldn't make it to be here. As an example, one is the C-MEX facility. There's a few residential homes within the core of the neighborhood. But as you can see, I don't think you could find a project that has affected property owners with this amount of overwhelming support. And thank you so much for the time, and I hopefully that was as brief as I could possibly do it. And then for the clerk, well, I'm not sure if I can turn these in, but these are the--
Sure. Before you leave, does anyone want to ask him any questions? Please.
How are you gonna ensure the affordability you're talking about?
It's done through the incentive program. So again, we have an implied one-time FAR. And so when the FAR increases in this neighborhood, between 3.75 and 5.5, we have to transfer the, the development capacity to build that. As you know, the City Commission recently passed the affordability requirements that mandate that when you're taking advantage of the incentive programs that downtown West Palm Beach has in terms of TDR transfers, 20% of your incoming FAR has to be maintained as affordable. It's code. This isn't, this isn't a concept that we created. But what it is, is this is a project that that concept was actually built for. Because we don't have the in-place FAR to build the capacity that this master plan will allow without those TDR transfers. And so as a result, it's, it's, it's actually guaranteed by code that that is going to take place.
And are you thinking that to be like scattered amongst or in the lower buildings? How are you, are you guys already working on where you're gonna be placing them? Versus just in one building, which is not advisable?
Yeah, so the answer to that is we're not far enough along. As you know, we're here for a comp plan amendment. We're not here for a specific site plan approval or a specific project. But they do have to, you know, exist within this neighborhood or be placed elsewhere. But again, given the amount of incentive that's required for us to breach our capacity, we will be, I don't know, Anna Maria can probably speak to this with more specificity. But I would think we will be one of the greatest sort of tools of that code to enhance affordability in much-needed housing supply within this city.
Thank you.
Go ahead, John.
Well, my ears just perked up a little bit. So are you saying that this area will be a recipient site of folks who don't want to build their workforce housing requirement within their billionaire's row developments? And, but it could be.
It could be. What, what I'm saying is that matter-of-factly, we have in place amongst our 13 and a half acres that we own, we have an unused FAR of approximately 500,000 square feet. The way this code is constructed, which you'll hear more about when we come through with the actual zoning code, is that we have the ability to transfer FAR internally. Any of those internal transfers are subject to the affordability requirement that's codified. Any additional FAR that comes into this neighborhood above and beyond our 500,000 square feet is all subject to the affordability requirement of 20%. So this is not a situation where we have the in-place FAR to build what this master plan is going to allow. So we have to take advantage of that incentive program to, to accomplish our goals here.
Just one question, and I might be asking this too early for this project. But have any traffic studies been done or discussed in terms of with this being built out, how it would impact surrounding neighborhoods? And I'm particularly thinking of 7th Street, because 7th Street actually runs into, you know, Palm Beach Lakes, and people increasingly are using 7th Street to, to cut through and cut down. I know it's blocked right now because of construction. But has there been any discussion, because that's actually my neighborhood? So has there been any discussion about the potential impacts of the surrounding neighborhoods in terms of traffic?
Rick Green, Development Services Director. At this point, no, because again, tonight, we're looking at the comprehensive plan, and then probably in the next month or two, we'll be back with the specific zoning amendments. I will remind the board that this is part of a transportation concurrency exception area. So we are limited to 15.1 million square feet of non-residential uses that could be built in the downtown. Having said that, we've built just over 10 million to date. We do a report that we provide to Palm Beach County and the State Department of Economic Opportunity every March of every year, and that shows the capacity. In order to get that 15.1 million square feet, we had to build 7,300 units. We're almost at 9,000 now. So there had to be a balance of residential, the non-residential. We've done that. Having said that, if the zoning changes are approved, and Joe and his partner Ned come in with a site-specific project, like a 20-story building, there will be a site-specific traffic study that will be required for that. It's just premature at this time.
So having Joe presented all the kind of inspiration of what the vision is, now I'm in charge of presenting the boring part of this. To be able to accomplish these version and these changes, we need to do some changes to the codes in the city. We are required to do, or will need to do, an amendment to the Downtown Master Plan element of the comprehensive plan. We are required to do also an amendment to the Downtown Master Plan Urban Regulations, LDRs. And we will have to rezone the Industrial Chic district into the new Nora district, and rezone some portions of the Bressford Park district. What we are here tonight is to review the proposed amendments to the comprehensive plan. As Rick mentioned, next month, we will back, we'll be back in front of you to review the details of the zoning and land development regulation and the proposed rezoning for these properties. So in terms of the comprehensive plan amendment, there are three policies that we are modifying. The first one is policy 1.1.1, and it's the policy that basically describes each of the districts in the downtown. In this case, we need to establish the new, the new North Railroad Avenue District, and delete the industrial, the existing Industrial Chic district. And we will also gonna modify a portion of the Bressford Park and make it part of the Nora district. So what it was previously, the Industrial Chic district, that is this light purple, will be now called the Nora district, and a portion of the Bressford Park district will be also incorporated as part of that district. The Nora district is characterized as a mixed-use district that implements a contextual and gradual transitional scale between a high intensity along Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard and the higher intensity of the downtown core. The areas along North Railroad Avenue will accommodate small and mid-scale buildings in new structures or renovations of the existing industrial buildings with commercial ground-floor uses intended to activate the district. This is a caption of the description for the district. The full description is on your packet. Then, policy 3.1.3 delineate the new boundaries of the district. So the new Nora district, as I mentioned, it's what previously was the Industrial Chic district. The Industrial Chic District 5 will be translated into the Nora 5. The Industrial Chic District 2 will be converted into the Nora 2. In addition to that, a portion of the Bressford Park District residential will be converted into the Nora 2, and is these block, and will be part of the Nora 2. And Bressford Park District 5, where a portion of that, will be converted also into the Nora 5. And that's these blocks along Dixie Highway. Important to mention that we are basically just changing the names of these districts. The base development capacity and height allowed within the Nora, the new Nora district, will be the same that was previously allowed under the Industrial Chic or the Bressford Park. So it's just basically a change on the name and the description, but the development capacity is the same. And this is important because what Rick mentioned, we are under the transportation concurrency exception area, so we're not allowed to increase the, the base development capacity for any parcel in the downtown. The only way that we can achieve additional capacity is if we use incentives. And that's what the next changes will be. Delineating the areas eligible for incentives within this. We'll increase the development capacity allowed through incentives. And the details of the incentive will be presented on the zoning and land development regulations. What the comp plan established is what is the maximum that that incentive will be. So basically, from the base height and FAR, we have a table that will show what is the maximum allowed within that district for incentives. Where those incentives are distributed within that district will be delineated by the zoning code. Again, as the, the overall development capacity of the DMT is maintained because the incentives will be achieved through the transfer of development rights from other properties. And just to go over a little bit, so the district, this Industrial Chic District 2 to 5, it had a previous incentive. We are modifying, and all this area will be now eligible for incentives. And then a portion on the south end of the district will also be eligible for incentive. The core of the neighborhood, that is the properties between 8th and 10th, that is the residential core of the neighborhood, as well as the properties along Railroad Avenue, will not be eligible to receive incentives. So the scale of those developments will remain as it is right now. The additional development capacity will be achieved through the TDRs, and it's necessary to promote the redevelopment of the area. It is proposed as an, to implement a gradual transition in scale from the core of the neighborhood, and Joe already went through this, but is, the center will remain the same, and then a gradual transition will increase the height of those buildings towards the edges of the neighborhood where additional height is appropriate. Along Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard, that is a higher, a wider road, and can absorb additional height, or Quadro Boulevard on the other end, closer to the downtown. It's also intended to be accommodated on the portions of the neighborhood that have the majority of the vacant land. So we are not replacing existing urban fabric. We're just occupying the vacant land. The policy 3.1.3 also includes the table, DMP 1, that, that has the maximum development capacities allowed as a base, as an incentive. So this is a change that I was mentioning. So the Industrial Chic district will be removed and basically replaced by the new Nora district. And the capacities, as you can see, the base capacity will remain the same. And then the incentives will be increased to allow the additional capacity in terms of FAR and also in height. The only other change that we are proposing for the Bressford Park district is specifically an existing regulation-- an existing regulation that had a maximum density limitation in the residential core and also on the mixed-use area along Dixie Highway. The reason why we want to propose this removal of the density limitations is because it has been proven in the rest of the downtown that the density is not beneficial for the development of the projects. The market will drive how big the units are, and as long as we have the maximum capacity of square footage, we can control the mass of the building, and the market will determine if the units are smaller or larger, depending on what they need. This image was already shown, so I just want to reiterate that the proposed design basically adjusts the scale of the development according with its location and protects the core of the neighborhood. In addition to those changes regarding Bressford Park and industrial shake, we are just taking advantage of the fact that we are doing this comprehensive plan amendment and doing two minor changes to the map to indicate two open spaces, two new urban open spaces in the downtown. One is the new park that is going to created on what is called Flagler Station Linear Park is where the old railroad spur occur coming from the water treatment plant. I don't know if you have seen, there's an exist, a building that is under construction right now on Banyan and Tamarine. On the north side of that building, there's a really skinny property that is owned by the CRA. That's where the tracks used to go. There are still some remnants of those tracks, so we are converting that into an urban open space, a small linear park. That will need to be rezoned as urban open space. And also an existing park on Flagler Drive that is called Jose MRT Park, that has been used as a public open space for many years, but it actually has a zoning designation, so we are just changing the designation to officially recognize them as urban open space. In terms of the process, what we are seeing today, as I said before, is the comprehensive plan amendments necessary to move this forward. It was a review by the Downtown Action Committee on October 13. The first reading is scheduled for November 29. After the first reading from the City Commission, if it is approved, we will send the amendments to the Department of Economic Opportunity for their review. And while the state reviews the proposed amendments to the comprehensive plan, we will be working on the amendments to the zoning code. They will be presented next month to DAC and Planning Board, and they are scheduled to be presented to the City Commission on January 10, 2022. Once we complete the first reading and we get back the response from the state, the two items will be presented concurrently to the City Commission for second reading and adoption the first week of February 2022. In terms of community input, we have presented these proposals to the City Commission in February this year, and the City Commission instructs staff to work with the developer on these proposed amendments. Previous to that, last year, we did a first round of some modifications to the code to allow the first phase of the redevelopment of Railroad Avenue, and it was to allow surface parking lots along the east side of Railroad Avenue. You saw that last year, and that will allow the developer to initiate the new tenant improvements on the west side and have parking associated with those. Those buildings on the west side do not have parking, so we needed to provide some alternative for parking while the new development occurs on the north side and structure parking gets built. More recently, on September 30, we did another community meeting where we have over 20 participants and presented the general vision for the neighborhood and received positive feedback from the existing neighborhoods, neighbors. The DAC, as I would say, will review the proposed amendments last October 13, 2022, 2021, and approve the amendment for zero. Part of the discussion that we had at that time is the board wanted to be sure that the, the new regulations that we'll implement were appropriate to ensure the compatibility and the scale, the gradual scale of the, of the neighborhood. There were some discussions about the kind of the reduction of the size of the single-family neighborhood or the small scale, and there were some discussions, but nothing was included on the motion in terms of that regard. Based on that, staff recommends approval of Planning Board 1899 based on the findings and data and analysis presented in this staff report and based on the findings that the amendment meets the requirements of Chapter 163 Florida statutes, and it is consistent with other elements of the city's comprehensive plan. That concludes the staff presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions of staff? Sure, of course.
Where did the TDRs come from? Is there a TDR bank in downtown?
Santa Claus.
It's not a bank, but it's basically, they come from historic buildings downtown. So there are several historic buildings. Some of them have already transferred to TDRs, but we still have other buildings that have not transferred to TDRs.
They're out on the open market.
They are on the upper market, exactly. They are, I have to say, they are getting more scarce because there's a lot of development going on right now, so there's a series of different developers that are trying to find them. So we, we get really small transfers now. Before, we're larger parcels. Now we're getting transfers of 2,000 square feet from one property to the other one, but that's where they get the TDRs.
Is it envisioned that the additional development capacity, I mean, can they use a combination of TDRs and incentives, or is, or are they running the same?
The, the, yes, they are the same. Right now, the incentives are to allow them to transfer TDRs to the property.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? And if not, we'll hear from the public. Will Diaz, are you here? Come forward to the podium. How about Mammy Kistner? Please come forward. Joseph Biskalali or something, forgive me for butchering the name. Are you here, Joseph? Maziar Kishawarz, you can take the other podium. Susan Steckney. Susan, are you here? Okay, you could follow him. And behind this lady, how about Jennifer Reed? Are you here, Jennifer Reed?
We're here.
Okay, if you can come forward behind this lady. Why don't you proceed first? Go ahead.
Good evening again, Planning Board and Chairman. Mammy Kistner, 111 2847th Road, northwest Palm Beach. Also, I am the First Lady of the Historic Tabernacle Missionary Baptist Church. I gave you a little bit of history earlier, 128 years, invested in a very historic area that they are talking about, that many members in the area. I am opposing the project. I told you before, I was on the development team for the Bristol. One of the reasons I'm opposing this project tonight is because I don't believe effective outreach has been done in the whole community. What many developers do not understand is that not only are you buying a property, but you are impacting historic districts, and you're going to impact the whole community. And I have expressed that many times, that there needs to be additional outreach. I have been getting flooded with calls of harassment with the people in that community who do not, who are not ready to sell, and I think that we really need to consider that there is, this is a blighted area, yes, we're aware of that, but for you to be harassing people to sell is a real issue for me personally. And secondly, if you are serious about a commitment to a community which is within walking distance to downtown, then you need to have the right outreach. And to say that you've outreach and 20 people showed up in a community of hundreds, I don't think that's acceptable, and so I am very strongly opposing this project tonight, and hopefully they'll do a better job. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, do you want to come forward, please?
Good evening. My name is Maziar Kishawarz. I'm a 40-year resident of Palm Beach County, and I've done business from west Palm Beach for the last 35 years. I own two contiguous properties. One is 711 North Dixie Highway, and the other is 414 Seventh Street on the south end of the proposed project. I have to tell you that when 20 years ago, we purchased this property in hopes of placing our place of business in it, it was a drug house. It had no windows. The building is 107 years old. We completely renovated it, spent a lot of money, and have had our bill, our, our place of business there for the last 20 years, 19 years to be exact. It took us a year to build. It has been difficult. It has been a, a rough ride, I have to say. Our staff love it because we have to ask them to drive the company trucks. We are engineers and surveyors, by the way. We have to ask them to take the company trucks home with them. They, of course, like that. I don't like it because there's, that, that's not a balance that I have in the business to let people drive the cars all around, because if they sit on the parking lot, they get broken into. From the big dump truck that's parked next to my entry to the, to the place of business that I have, which has plants growing out of its wheel, to the t-shirt shop up the street with the sign that is a defecating dog, this has been a tough ride. 20 years we've been holding out. All the area to our south has been rejuvenated. All the area to our north has been rejuvenated. So the problem, as an engineer, I'm trained to use deduction. The, the problem is not the city that we are in. The problem is this one area. The problem with this area, in my opinion, is that it never had an anchor. It never had a captain. We tried. A number of us kept getting together, kept meeting with the city, kept meeting with the, the, the TPA, and what we were wrong about was thinking that the solution laid in going from east to west. Fixing Dixie, we thought, would have fixed the problem, and how clever of this developer.
Sir, if you can conclude your remarks, please. Thank you.
To come in and start from the west to east. Secondly, how fortuitous is it for a developer to come in and spend this type of money on infrastructure, which our city needs terribly bad? I know, because I worked for the city on infrastructure. Please approve this project. This area is a missing link, and it's been left and forgotten. We need this. It's a no-brainer.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
Hello, my name is Jennifer Reed. I live in this area, the neighborhood, when Mr., I forget his name, first said that, oh, it's one house, I thought he was talking about me, because it's my house. I've been there since I was a little child, over 40-some years in that neighborhood, and it was my mom's legacy. And I could tell you, my mom washed clothes at the linen laundromat down there on Dixie for years, a single parent, and she bought that house when the other black people were saying, don't go in that neighborhood, because, you know, it was predominantly white, but she wanted the best for her children. And my mom bought that house, and we lived, and I grew up, I went to college. Matter of fact, I went to Palm Beach Atlantic, and I went there, and I graduated. You know, the thing is, like, I, I'm not opposed of beautifying and doing something different, but when it's rushed to me, I feel like when stuff rushed and pushed on you, and like, you know, you don't know what to do, it's like you like about to lose your home, even though you may not be, you know, I, I feel, I don't feel comfortable with that. And I had a problem when they said, oh, most of the lots are vacant and whatever. Most of the lots, they bought between three weeks to eight months. They bought all the property. But me, it ain't about the property, you know, you taking this and you buying it. It's about my mom. I'm thinking, would my mom be proud of me? Would she be proud of me if I give up her land? You know, what would she do? And I don't have a problem with, with what they're doing. I love beautiful things. I love stuff to be nice, you know, but then I think about, okay, what? I, I just don't want to feel like I'm all boxed in and, and, and the neighborhood. They, all the neighborhoods, everybody know drugs are everywhere. They come in, but if you don't do what you're supposed to do, if you don't call and you don't reach out to your commissioners, I reach out to my commissioners, I email, I talk, I call the police department. I'm, I, I was like the community advocate. I would help other homeowners that didn't live in the neighborhood, live in different cities, from Miami to Fort Lauderdale to Port St. Lucie. I would watch their properties for them. Anything went down, I took care of, they made sure their property was okay. So that's what I'm saying. I, I, I just opposed of it as far as putting a 20-story building in front of my house. How can you go from three, three stories to 20? That is just not right. You're not thinking about, they say the character, but you mean the character of what? The neighborhood? If you was thinking about the character, you would have came. And like, a lot of times, I would talk to them, but I won't talk to them because I've seen a lot of lies that I didn't like. Don't lie on our community. Don't lie on my community. That's my baby. And then who with this project represent the black African-American people? Who represent, is there anybody that looks like me? And I'm beautiful. My husband, he thinks that, you know. I'm real beautiful. So is there anybody that represent us? You know, and that's what I have, you know, that's the only thing. If I, if somebody come with some clarity, something that, you know, I would be okay with it.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments. All right, may I hear from you, please?
Yes, hi. My name is Susan Steckney, and I live at 411 Eighth Street, and I own five contiguous pieces of property altogether that have houses on them, and I lease them out to wonderful I, I'm going to start out by talking about location. So I'm at 411 Eighth Street. The Mandel Public Library is 411 Clemata Street. If you go with your odometer on the car, it is exactly half a mile from Eighth Street to Clemata Street Library, half a mile. If you look at Clemata Street and go half a mile south, what kind of development do you have? You have tremendous development, unaffordable development. How come four blocks south is so valuable and going four blocks north is still in blight? It's crazy. It's a wonderful community. We're, we're two blocks from the water, from Flagler and, and the water. So it's a small neighborhood, very small. If you go from Dixie to Railroad, it's exactly one block. So we're talking one block on Eighth Street, one block on Ninth Street, one block on Tenth Street. That is the core of the neighborhood. For the most part, the rest of it is all empty lots. So to be able to have this developed and not to have to be worried about railroad, because once Railroad closes down at 5 o'clock, because there's some cement work going on there, factories, then it's drug dealers. You, you cannot walk out onto Railroad. You cannot walk down to the end of the block because you're afraid. So to have this comprehensive plan and not piecemeal, because they're empty lots, you can have piecemeal development there, which would be better than nothing, of course, but this is a whole comprehensive plan. How much more can you ask for? And the developers are nice. They are nice guys. They approached me two years ago about selling my property, and I said, no, thank you. They never asked me again. I said no, and that was it. I, I don't know. I just think NORA is a dream come true, and I've lived there 21 years. I own five pieces altogether, so.
Thank you, ma'am.
I, I do hope you support this because it'll make a change, such a huge change. Thank you.
Thank you. Will Diaz, are you here? Mr. Diaz? How about Joseph Biskalali, something like that? If you can come forward, sir? Okay. Wajdi Basadak? If you could come forward, please. Why don't you proceed, sir?
Good, good evening, everybody. My name is Wajdi Basadak. Everybody knows me here by wedge, like potato wedge. I'm here to speak on my behalf because I live in 424 Tenth Street since 2004, and I also, I'm going to speak on behalf of Abe Haruvi. He's the biggest property owner in that area. He has properties stretching from Eighth Street to Palm Beach Lakes or Long Dixie, and also a lot of property in Tenth Street, Ninth Street, and Eighth Street. We're here to show our strong support to, to this project. Abe Haruvi fixed a lot of properties along Dixie. When we came here in 2004, it's all empty, drug dealers, prostitution, you cannot even walk outside, a lot of crime, and slowly started... And slowly started renovating this property, offering affordable rents to businesses, and things improved the last few years, but I still personally, I would never go to Eleventh Street after dark, I would never go to Railroad, I would never go to CVS across the street from Palm Beach Lakes, I would never go to the gas station past dark. I lived there, um, fifteen years. I married there, I got four kids. My kids were never allowed to play outside. I deal with, my situation is unique. I live there and I work there for this property owner. I deal with all the tenants along Dixie, all of our tenants, they're suffering, there is a lot of crime, they, they lose customers, the hair salon lady just lost customers because people don't want to come, they get mugged, they get, uh, they walking into the stores. So we believe that this project is the natural continuation of downtown West Palm Beach to connect someday with Northwood with nice-looking, affordable houses. So again, on my behalf and Abe Haruvi, we strongly support this project, and we hope you guys give it a chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, John, um, Chadanana? If you'd come forward, sir? Pam Reedus? If you'd come forward to the lectern? Brian Nadal? Are you there, Mr. Nadal? Would you come forward behind that gentleman? And, um, Lydian W. I don't know who this is. You can follow this lady here. Okay, why don't you proceed, sir?
Hello, good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk today. My name is Omeish, or Jonathan Jadunandan, and I own two properties on Eleventh Street. Their addresses are four, four, four forty-four and four forty-eight Eleventh Street. I fully support the Nora Project, and here is why. Um, when I purchased these property, it was zoned residential, and there were only a few houses on the street, mostly vacant lots. The area, area was especially under the Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard overpass, which was always have vagrants, conducted illegal drug sales, illegal garbage dumping, prostitution among other crimes. Susan, Anita, and I thought that if property owners were given the opportunity to build on their lot similar to what happened on the east side of Dixie, that private investor would come in, or the property owners will build on their properties, and it will help with the, with the area. Unfortunately, that's a decade ago, and the area is still the same way. Those zoning changes hasn't worked. We work with Anna Maria and with Louis Franco, who was a mayor at that time, to do the current zoning that we have. So now comes the Nora Project team. I listen to what they have to offer. I know that it is the best opportunity for the area. Um, I agree with my neighbor, I'm on Eleventh Street also, that we're approached by individuals which, who are asking us to sell, um, our properties, but I like to say that these people were middle people, or middlemen, trying to make a quick commission on a transaction. They didn't really care about our homes and about, um, the, our investment. I've been communicating with Nora Team, and they were open to my ideas and easy to work with. In addition, they are located, Nora Team is located right on between Tenth Street and Eleventh Street and Dixie Highway, so they're very accessible to people that live in the area. Sorry, I'm thirsty. Um, I will encourage any owners in the area to reach out to the Nora Group. I'm confident they will achieve a win-win situation or a win-win outcome. With that said, I ask that you approve the zoning change that the group is looking for. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ma'am?
Hi. Yes, my name is Pamela Reedus. I'm at twelve twelve Madera Court. I'm all for change. I've been there since the eighties, so I've seen a lot in the neighborhood. There is drugs, everything that they, everybody has mentioned. I do, would, would love to see a change, um, and hoping that with this change, that my daughter could maybe purchase one of these condos or whatever they build, affordable, and, um, just, you know, just be fair about the whole situation, uh, that the developers come in and do. That's all. I really appreciate the, um, the, the, I appreciate it, I appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Sir?
Brian Nadal, I'm a resident of Northwood Shores, vice president of that board, um, and a designing instruction professional, being in support of this project. You know, there is no perfect project, as was stated. Um, in respect to the residents, um, who may feel they've been treated unfairly, you know, fair is a hard word to define, but when you look at an ethical decision, you, you can feel what that is, right? And we have processes in place. I've been up here before, um, opposing plans and opposing, um, you know, amendments to our, to our zoning. This time, this time I'm on the other side of it, and that's the beauty of process, and that's what I'm trusting in my support of this project, that we're following the process of community engagement and respect for individuals who live there, because the process is there to protect those who are not in power. And decisions are made by people who have power. So if we're not following the process, at some point, we're not gonna be on the side of the power, and we're gonna be really hoping and clinging to that process and hoping that somebody's following it, because that's why it's there. And to your point, John, you know, I really appreciated your comments earlier, um, as far as the vision for this city, because I've lived here three years, and it's been moving really fast, the amount of development. I've never seen, uh, so many large projects and major plan changes, um, in a city like this. So, um, you know, I, I fully support this project, but again, trusting that the developers are following the process, that the planning staff is following the process, because the pendulum swings both ways, um, regardless if you support it or not. And I do support it. I think it's fantastic. Thank you.
Ma'am? May we hear from you?
Hello, my name is Lydian Wethersby, and I do not support this project. I am fifty-nine years old, I'm retired, and I enjoy life, but my baby sister just got up and spoke. We're the second black family owned in that neighborhood on Eleventh Street. My mom did a lot of things to make sure we go, and constantly, being there, living there, we were all, all the time called, police was always calling us, because they didn't like what we looked like, lived there. And we had a lot of ups and downs, and they say about drugs, drugs is everywhere. Keep on looking, if they ain't coming to your house, it's coming. And they talk, you know, about the tab, they had drugs and everything over there, the tabernacle missionary, they turn around and make everything beautiful, and you can make everything. But what I hate, I hate people coming around causing weasels, I shouldn't call them that, coming with their tactics, and scare tactics, and things they're saying to do. We own that land. My mom worked hard, hard to have that. And I'm gonna stay there, we're gonna stay there. You can't push this out, and they said drugs, and he's saying, "Oh, all this stuff is happening." Call the law, that's what you have, call the police. We had to do it. Call the police. That's what they're for. If you can't use them, and going out at night scared and this and that, that's not so. People go out all the time, and you knew what you were buying into when you bought it, and all of a sudden you want to flip it and change it. But what about the people that lived there? Had to go through everything that they went through. They still there. They still there. Only reason ones are coming in, because they can see this idea, they can see this, everybody can see idea. We have dreams too, as well. We can see too, as well. We can see what you're doing. Twenty stories, come on. This is very aggressive movement. Where, that, our land is on Franklin Park and Bedford over there? Now all of a sudden you want to change it to some named Nora. What is that supposed to be? And to the committee, I hope you really take a look. Take a drive over there. They know it's a lot of stuff going up on that bridge, nobody's calling, because they want to say it's horrible, they want to see all of this so they can take the land or do this and that, and scare tactics. No, I'm praying every day, my candle, Tabaz prayer, making sure things happen. Yes, I'm black, and I'm planning on staying there. I don't like to use a race card, but it seem like it's happening right about now. And I don't mean before, because I guess I'm hungry. I've been here, I waited a long time.
A lot of us too, my friend.
Who I am, is who I am. But I love my family, I love that, I grew up there, we had some good times. I still do have good Sunday times there. Have a good time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate. Is anyone else who has not been heard or wishes to be heard on this matter? And if so, I need you to fill out a card, but you go ahead and speak now if you like, and then fill out the card afterwards. Please state your name for the record.
Oh, okay. Hello, I'm Rhonda Bennett, and my mom was spoke earlier. Um, I'm basically, I'm not opposed or I'm not for the plan. I tell my mom all the time, this is my, for me, this is my great-great-grandmother's house. So that's a lot of life, you know? So we can talk about the drugs, we can talk about all of that, but to say I'm scared to go outside after a certain time, that is not facts. I stay outside all night, I have no problems. My car got stolen there years ago. You know, the first people that told me exactly who did it? The people outside. So yes, you see drugs, yes, you see prostitutes, yes, you see all of that, but if you guys are not coming in to fix that situation, it doesn't matter. You're, we're talking about things that has been there before the developers, the developers came in to want to do this plan. I've been living in that house since two thousand and eleven when we moved here. Drugs has been there, same thing has been there, nobody has came in to try to fix those type of things. So we can't bring that up to say, "Oh, the neighborhood is bad, the neighborhood is this, the neighborhood is that." The neighborhood has been that. The neighborhood has been these things that you guys are saying, but nobody has worked together to make the neighborhood better, and now that's what we're kind of trying to throw under the bus. "Oh, the neighborhood is bad, let's go ahead and sell it." No, we can, we can fix it, we can make it pretty, we can do all of this, but what are you guys doing for the actual, the people that live here? You have to understand, some of us do not get to see houses passed down from generation to generation. So for me to be able to see my great-grandmother live there, my great-grandma live there, my mom, that's something important. So now I don't want to just, oh, one day wake up and see, oh, all these buildings and things like that. I tell my mom all the time, if this plan goes through in ten to fifteen years, it's not gonna be the, what I'm used to seeing. So work with us, if this is something that you guys are going to do, really come in and work with us, like you guys are saying that you're doing. Yes, you guys are taking a step forward, but the community has not been all together to be able to talk about these plans and how this is going to affect people that live there. We are a community. Most of us have lived there for twenty-plus years, you know what I'm saying? So this is a community that one is gonna be ripped apart unfortunately because of this plan, so let's work together to figure out what we're going to do, so this plan can be successful and be a benefit for everyone, not just the developers, not just the city, everyone.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, um, if you want to have a, a brief response, you're not required to, but if you, give you the opportunity, and then we'll take it back to the board for final discussion.
Sure. Thank you so much, and I'm actually happy this is happening in a public forum so that we can discuss this, um, here live. Ms. Reed and your family, as you know, we've, we've tried to engage and talk with you. It is a unique situation where there is a single owner-occupied user, um, in the fifty-one parcels that I mentioned, the fifty of which that we control. We've tried to construct a series of ideas, um, for her, but unfortunately, we've not been able to have that conversation, and we hope that tonight, in this public forum, this is at least the bridge to, to make that connection and, and can really start that conversation. I'd love to say continue it, but it's really started. That being said, in terms of the other comments, I think it's very clear from the support map that it is an overwhelming amount of support. Again, these changes are, are really only affecting the parcels north of Tenth Street, and again, there are, um, two owner-occupied, um, units there. One is Ms. Reed's, and the other one is, is, is Ms. Pam, who spoke in, in favor of this project. So we are open to any ideas and suggestions, um, including finding out ways to retain this family who's been in this neighborhood for so long within this neighborhood at an alternate location, or they can stay right where they are. All we're talking about right now is a, a comprehensive plan amendment that allows for these changes to go forward. This is not a site plan approval for a specific project. And candidly, and I think we've expressed this to the family, but again, we haven't been able to do this, so we're doing it in the public, so, but it's nice now. There are no immediate plans at all for that section, and, and this neighborhood will be developed in phases, and the first phase of our ground-up development will be between Tenth and Eleventh Street, not even affecting the parcels that, um, are being described here today. So, um, I'm speaking to you directly. I would welcome the opportunity at any time to speak with you. As you know, we've tried to make amends, and I also want to make clear that the harassment that was mentioned earlier, that is not our team, that are not people from us at all. There were a series of real estate brokers in any speculative market that were the ones doing that harassment. For me personally, you can look at my track record and the things that I've done, and the community work that I continue to do, and understand that I'm not one of those guys that you might think I am, just based on my appearance and, and the scale of this project. So we are open to you at any time. Our office is literally a half a block from your home, and we are ready and willing and able to talk and try to find the solution that works for all parties. So thank you, and I'm glad that you invited that, and I'm happy, and I hope that that was respectful and that you understand where we're coming from as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So let's bring it back to the board for discussion. Let me start with you, um, Carl. I keep forgetting you, Mr. LaParte, snap back into us.
Uh, certainly, uh, the project, uh, you know, on paper looks great. It reminds me of Bethesda, Maryland, and Annapolis, some other places around, uh, the country, um, where you can literally travel into another neighborhood and stay there for the day and, uh, and, uh, have some fun. I, I do think the challenge, though, with this project, um, is that, uh, for a lot of the locals, it does seem, uh, especially actually the people who live outside of the, that this area seems somewhat rushed. Uh, and the other challenge that I think the developer, uh, has is the, perhaps not the historical perspective of some of these other developments, uh, over the years, like a Rosemary Square, where people were eminent domained. Uh, and so my recommendation, so I'm, I'm, I'm letting you know now that I'm actually going to vote no on this, although I do think it's a great project. Uh, but the reason why is I really think you need more community engagement from those who are certainly directly impacted, and I, and I know you've got a lot of folks on board who signed off or sold your properties or what have you, but I think you also need to consider the African-American community that surrounds this area as well, and, and get some input, uh, from them, because they will be impacted by, uh, a project of this size and, and scope, uh, as well. And they will be concerned that they will be the next ones on the list to be, to be moved out. So I, I think you want to have a much broader dialogue with folks in that surrounding area to get the kind of level of support that I think you really will need to move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, John. Your thoughts?
Um, I think when you look at the, uh, the area, this is clearly, uh, part of our downtown that hasn't been the beneficiary of the boom and development that's happened in our city. And, um, I think there's a lot of talking that still needs to happen here, and we've heard that tonight. I would like to move this forward to the next stage, because I think there's a lot of time, because they're not even scheduling the second reading of the ordinance until February. So there's lots of opportunities here to continue that conversation and to be heard in these chambers by the city commission. And so I would like to keep it moving forward, because the window of development opportunity is always a finite thing. And, uh, you know, when there's investment at risk and the potential for that, and certainly some of the benefits, like the infrastructure improvements are really welcome improvements to the area. Um, and ultimately, I think it's going to be a benefit, and it's going to increase the land values of the folks in that area. And, uh, I, I'd just like to see it move forward. I think there's still a lot of time here for people to continue to be able to have that conversation, and I think that folks, I think that the applicant is getting that message loud and clear here tonight, that that conversation needs to happen.
Thank you, John. Peter?
Um, this is the first little step in this entire development. You're gonna have tremendous opportunities at every little step of approval. This will take six months to a year, and I think that I would take advantage of the offer that the developer made to you to try and figure out where a compromise could be reached. Now statistically, it's always proven that the minute you increase density and you bring people into a neighborhood, safety improves by tremendous factors. The more people you have on the street, the safer your neighborhood will become. And I think that's a secondary impact of- And I think that's the secondary impact of allowing a higher density along the perimeter is to bring in more people. I don't have a problem with this first step and I would certainly support this, uh, to move along in terms of the process.
I'm going to mirror and say yes because it is a first step, I move forward with it. I, I do understand your concerns and I do hope that communication, uh, continues. I wouldn't want to live in a one-story house right next to a 20-story building. So I understand and I live in Northwood and some of my neighbors have had to deal with that and they haven't moved and, um, you know, that is what it is. But I do think that they're trying to do something that's going to benefit the area. Will it look different? Absolutely. Will some of the homeowners leave because of the changes that are made? Absolutely. Um, but I think overall there's time to try to come to an agreement on some of these issues and it's, it's trying to benefit that area overall. Um, so I do hope that you guys communicate and try to find a common ground on some of these things, but I do think it's the best decision now to support this, trying to move forward.
Thank you.
And I would just reiterate what everyone else has said, which is to say, I think it's, you know, I think it's a great opportunity for the city. John, kind of to your point about us not feeling like there's a plan overall, this is just, this is just a region of, of kind of downtown, but at least there'll be some real thought to the entire region at once, which is kind of helps in terms of that development. Um, and, you know, again, reiterate that, you know, obviously it makes sense that there be an opening for a discussion with, uh, with the neighbors, but I think it's a great project and support it.
And I'd just like to add that I've lived for 30 years, just a couple blocks to the east. I am intimately familiar with this neighborhood. With all due respect, I think this is a blessing. This is a blessing and that's really how I feel about it. So I've watched that area, nothing's happened in three decades I've lived there. Something's going to happen now, real money's going to be put into it. I think you'll look back on this and say, it was a blessing. That's my firm belief. So I'm a very enthusiastic supporter on this. 30 years. I'm just telling you. Okay, looking then for a motion.
Uh, I'll move approval, Mr. Chairman of, uh, case number 1899, based on the findings and data and analysis presented in this staff report and based on the findings that the amendment meets the requirements of Chapter 163 Florida statutes and is consistent with other elements of the city's comprehensive plan.
Okay, we have a motion. Have we a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, so passes, one, two, three, four, five, to one. I'm not good on the math. Okay, is that all we needed? Just the one motion?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, everyone. Real quickly, before our board, we move on to other business, unfinished business, new business, anything else, everyone? If not, we stand adjourned. Thank you all. It's been a long evening.